The third session of the Cedar Falls City Council Goal Setting for December 7th is now in session. Boink. What do we start with here? I'll turn it over to Mayor Prochett.
Mayor Lott.
Mayor Lott. I think that's right.
So I don't really, again, won't have a lot of comments. We'll let Amy will cover a few things as we kind of jump in just for the structure and we'll go over the goals one, two, and three. And I'm probably just repeating a lot of what she's going to say. But I think generally, I think from talking, we want to just make sure, we know there's a lot of conversations. We can't have all the goal settings, remember, and the goal is to figure out just whether our next steps with each of the items, whether it's saying we want a work session on it, if it's something you can task to staff or the mayor to take, is it something you want to add? So just remember, we won't have time to talk about everything, but if it's an item, we want to make sure we want to have time to talk about it. We just set them aside and toward the end, then, the last session, we'll make sure we look at, okay, what are all the things we said we need work sessions on? How do we prioritize those? Otherwise, Amy? George, did you want to just?
Yeah, so just some specifics in terms of process for those of you who are new, and then also some slight changes for those of you who've been through before. So you all got the email yesterday that had the link to the packet, and then tomorrow you'll get the email with the link to the packet for Monday. We're planning on just walking through the goals one, two, three, four, five. We're prepared to do one through three tonight. It'll again depend timing wise on conversations. What you see in front of you is a copy of one through three, and you have what's up on the screen. And so Ron and Jen and department heads and team have spent time like they do every year. And then Mayor Lott has spent time with them as well, walking through the pieces. And so the yellow items, when you walk through, are items that the staff, that Ron will have a slide for, that there'll be something specific to cover. They also went through, and we took your notes from the first session where, and again, you're not beholden to those as the only things that are priorities, right? But it gave some information to staff around some things that you all thought were priorities. So those are the things that are highlighted in green. And for the goal setting session, there are ultimately two things that you're deciding on in each session, on each item. One is in the goal document, is it something that you want to keep, delete, or change in some way, or add? So specifically, if there's something that's important, the question will be, is there something you're wanting to change? If not, we don't need to have a conversation around it. If so, what is that? And then the other piece is, is this something that needs to be a work session? So things that were bigger items than we ended last year with the list of those things that were work session. We'll push a little bit to say, what exactly about this work session? Because sometimes that might not be clear. And then another piece that we want to add this year is come back at the end and look at that list of work sessions and do some prioritizing and even some timing in the year around that. And then the other piece is after each goal, we will do a pause and just do an open-ended, if there's anything else that you know you want to bring up for that goal. So that's how we're creating space for each goal to cover what's here, take in the feedback that we did get from you from the first night and create any open space for what you want to add, as well as just try to keep things moving. So that's what we've got for process. Any questions around that? Okay, then we know that Erin's out tonight, but we will continue with our same process. And in terms of, I'll check in on items to see where we're at. And if you can just use the thumbs, the way we've been doing that, just will help us keep things moving along as well. To you?
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming. As Amy said, yellow items are just ones that we have slides for. They may have been somebody marked them in your worksheet on night one, or it may be a staff-initiated one that we needed to talk about. Green is ones that are items that the body here has elected to talk about, that staff just didn't have a slide for. And then you'll see red, and there's some blue mixed in a little bit, but it's the tracking changes. Those are items or suggested language or suggested deletions from there. So as Amy said, trying to get through one, one, two, three tonight. I think that's going to be relatively doable, maybe even get out of here a little bit early if things go smoothly. Four and five would be Monday night, and we don't have anything scheduled for the 20th, but if we get to the end and there's another, that's still scheduled and reserved, we can have an additional night to talk about that. If anybody has anything right now, I'll just kind of jump right into it. So goal one, and we'll try to go through these as we move through here. And so goal one is really, I believe this was marked by a council member or a council member-elect that wanted to talk a little bit about employee wages and benefits. And just here's really kind of a highlight of, we try to keep our wage schedule up to date. It's been about five years now since we've gone over the wages or wage schedule. We had a third-party consultant come in and look through those. We know that, you know, since five years ago in 2018, obviously, we've had a pandemic and a number of things with regard to how the economy's acted. And so we have struggled a little bit sometimes in some of our work. I'll just use some examples here. So we lost significant number of maintenance workers over the past year, a lot of them going to the trucking industry, so if they have CDLs, they're just, there's more money out there than where we're at. We lost a wastewater operator this past year that went to another Iowa community. Finance clerks, for instance, finance clerks were hiring them at a salary that somebody that may have been here 10, 15, 20 years is getting paid. So there's some inequities there that, one of the things that we did look at last year and talked about, and we did a mid-year adjustment to a number of our pay grades that are 12 and below. So trying to keep up with some of those things. So I know that somebody had marked this, so if there's...
So is this the spot where I say, can we have a work session on this? Is that, or what do I say? I'm sorry, I, is it okay? I propose a work session on this, I guess.
Would you like a work session?
Specifically about wages, but also just different parts of policy of, you know, like, I have a concern, and it's not, it's just a concern of like, is it maybe the best? I get the practicality or the reason for permanent part-time. But I also am concerned that if, you know, folks aren't staying in those positions, I mean, maintain, or I mean, sorry, turnover is costly as well, and I guess just all of it together, a big conversation of could we do better as far as our policy of hiring and retaining our staff?
So looking at staffing and hiring retention a little more broadly?
Yes.
Particularly on the wages and benefits?
I think it's a founded concern. You shared, I share that same concern. I do keep in mind, too, that, you know, we can't keep a zero budget and pay for necessary increases. So we'll have to keep that as a learning opportunity. But I would think in particular wage and benefits, make sure that we, if it's been five years since we did a comparative analysis, let's help the staff out here.
What's the typical case that occurs?
I think five years is probably what you would shoot for, something in there. Now, Hammy said that we try to benchmark all of our positions anyway. So any positions that come up that's new or modified within, we send it off to the third-party consultant. And now that's part of the state code as well, that creating some of those positions and having a third-party look at it. And so anyway, we do that to try to stay up with it, but to overall give an overall market analysis. And I have some more information on that in a few slides, but that's kind of, permanent part-time. Permanent part-time is a great thing that works very well sometimes. So it's...
Can you explain that?
So a permanent part-time position is a position that's 29 hours a week or less. And so we have a number of those that are all over the city that people have been in for years, 10, 15 years, and they like it. And there's some that we've actually said, hey, we'd like you to apply for the full-time position, and they're not interested. But then there's other positions that we've also had that are permanent part-time, and they seem to turnover a lot. And so what we've done is we've actually combined like two permanent part-time positions to come up with a, to create a full-time position. So we've done that in certain positions, and that seems like, it goes in cycles, it really does. What you'll end up with at Public Works for a while is permanent part-time worked, and now it's, right now, it's probably not working as well. So we're kind of cycling back around.
And just to, like, and I'm not coming down on anybody, but in those positions, do they get any, what, if any, benefits do they get?
So they don't, what, Jen?
Pretty much the only thing they don't get is health insurance. I mean, otherwise, you know, can they participate in our cafeteria plan and some of that stuff?
Do they get vacation?
And they get like berated vacation and sick leave and holidays. It's just the biggie's health insurance is what they don't.
So I just like to like, I'm not saying I'm right or wrong. I just think that there needs to be, like, I like to learn more, and I feel like it benefit all of us to learn more. And we want to, I mean, we're a large employer. We want to be a great employer, right? So, or at least I think we do.
The normal cadence anyway, plus we've had a very atypical couple of years with wages across the nation.
We sell a lot of companies.
I was gonna say, does anyone sit in a company that's the same as it was five years ago? I don't even sit in the same company or the same kind of job. So I think we should probably just...
These part-time jobs, do they get to pick hours? Are they three days a week, or is it five hours, six days, five days a week, whatever?
Depends.
It just, whatever works to get the job done, I'm assuming?
Well, we have some that are actually remote work. We have a couple that are remote work. We have a couple that, hey, these are the hours we need you down at the transfer station, for instance. Some of those hours are, hey, these are the set hours we need you. But there's others that maybe they like the part-time stuff because they can drop their kids off and pick them up.
I was gonna say, the kids and daycare and lack of daycare.
So usually the managers are pretty good about working with, trying to fit in and where we need them.
So do we need to second Kelly's? Otherwise, we'll just talk about it right now for the next hour?
So what happens is by concentric...
Do we have a work session or are we?
Right, work session.
And I can quick point out, staffing as a bucket was one of the big buckets that we had quite a few items on. So I'm guessing as we go, we might have a few that are like, yeah, just put that in with that work session. Does it sound like we want a work session?
Yep, work session.
For staffing?
We have a work session?
Yes.
And right now, we've got wage and benefits for this work session, and there might be some other things really.
Wage benefits and staff positional alignment, right?
Wage, benefits, I also think about like, okay, if you're constantly having turnover, it's not just the people that are getting hired, it's the people that constantly have to train somebody. That gets real taxing on people. So all of it, like, let's do better.
Personnel evaluation?
Well, that's kind of that survey that's coming up.
And we'll go over some of those survey results a little bit in this as well. So this was goal 1A, two through five that we have listed as green. Staff doesn't really have any type of slides for this, so I know it was marked, and if we want to discuss it now.
Quick point of clarification, I know I've probably said this several times. A work session versus a committee meeting, work session's even more informal?
Yes.
And we're just arguing arm wrestle and like everything?
Hopefully it would be just discussion.
Just clarify.
So like technically, this is a work session. So it would be more like this where it'd be roundtable discussion, working through stuff.
Recorded though?
Yep.
And then in the chambers?
And that's kind of what I was thinking is, one, to make it, make sure it doesn't seem like it's in the back doors. I'd like to, if we do them, do them in the front meeting room that's in the foyer area. So I mean, that, I think there's enough room in there. There's actually probably more room in there.
It depends on the topic, but we can always set something up in the foyer as well.
Yeah, as long as we get good recordings, not just a little dictaphone thing. Why not the chambers to do this?
I think.
That's the benefit of them being able to be a little more discussion-based, that it works better in a small room, I'll grant you that.
Yeah.
So I'm not anti the chambers, but I kind of like looking at people. I think that's why it's been like said in the past, is why maybe before it had happened in a room. I'm not sure why that's funny, but...
Well, I could look at you right, I look at you right now, and I look at you at the chamber, and you're just a little bit off of an angle in the chamber.
Well, when you're in the chamber, you're going like this down the way, you're not really, I mean, I'm just saying my opinion. So I guess...
We engage better around a roundtable than at a...
I just want the recording, the benefit of the recording.
I think we have to record it, don't we?
But we'll make sure Tiger, because I've heard from some people like who listened to last year's goal setting that sometimes certain people are talking, you can't catch it. So we can just make sure at least there's high-quality audio. And so some of these items, I think some people mentioned them or put them on their list, but there wasn't really maybe a specific thing, you just wanted to say, oh, this is a priority?
Probably. I can't quite remember because that was a, I felt lots of pressure to hurry up, not from anybody, just my own brain. I just think it's good to remember those goals. That's part of the goals, that it all seemed very, if we're a professional organization, I want to make sure I personally remember those goals. So I think that's probably why I wrote it down.
And just to note, too, that you, there's the notes from that first night are in your packet as well?
Oh, sure.
If that's helpful.
When I started writing the As and the numbers, it was easier for me to write, but I knew in the end I would not remember what that meant.
So some of these, the action might just be nothing, it was just for reiteration at that point.
That's important, yeah. That's kind of what my next question would be, is what do we do with that besides just more interaction and encouraging culture? You know, improvements that they come up with, hey, we want to try this, yeah, we're supportive of that, let's try something.
And I could say, as mayor, personally, I'd be willing to say I'll take responsibility for number two and the communication piece there between council and staff, which that will be one of my priorities.
Nobody else has anything on that? We can move on to 1A, six, which is the employee survey. So have a number of just kind of, I know everybody here wasn't involved when the survey was, but that was conducted in 2022. It was through the strategic marketing services through you and I. We got the survey done for about $7,000. There was a $10,000 grant in there. So actually, even the $17,000 is pretty affordable when you're looking at doing something like that. The council actually decided that they wanted to go every two years for a survey. I think two years would be the longest I would suggest that we go. I'd prefer to do it annually, but this would be the year that we would again budget for it. And overall, the general results were reviewed with the employees. We went back, met with each employee group, department directors, division managers. And then I, along with the HR manager, we set goals for each department, come up with three to five top goals out of the employee survey to things that we can work on or communicate with or what with the employee groups. And so we'll continue to do those. I did have a number of slides here that just kind of, the next four slides, I think, are the, kind of broken down into low and no-cost improvements and higher investments. So we'll just kind of look at some of this so clearly define and communicate the PSO model to citizens of Cedar Falls. That was, I was a bit concerned from a lot of the public safety folks. Let me back up a little bit with the, with the council wanted at the time that we do a survey for employees and then also a smaller survey kind of tacked on at the end for the public safety employees. So there are some of the results in there that are a little bit different because public safety had a little more specific questions to their department, so.
This is all staff feedback?
These are all staff feedback, so. Encourage city administrators and elected officials to visit all departments, to meet employees and learn about their roles. Kind of move forward. Again, these are all in, but define and communicate the expectations and goals of the, at the council level. I think what we started to realize is, as a city administrator, department director, even division managers, we know what's going on at the council level. When you're maybe a field employee, you don't know necessarily, you don't follow the council as much. But so it is our responsibility to get that message down to them. I think we've done a lot more, a lot better job at that. Yes, sir?
I believe there was a question on there of how long your tenure was with the city? And then based on, this is what I heard, and then based on that, some people were apprehensive to really lay it out there, what's going on? Because they would say, oh, somebody 12 years, how many people are here for 12 years? I don't know what the question, like, how it was phrased, but...
So actually, some, and we talked about that because we knew that employees were going to be apprehensive to fill it out. It's supposed to be a kept secret and who fills it out and what they're, and we made sure that everything went to you and I, and so we don't know individual employees. There were a number of demographic-type questions that were there that, that if you did have access to that, you would be able to say, oh, this is, you know, I'm in Public Works, have been here 27 years, you know, some of those type of things. So you could narrow it down to probably a handful. But we made sure that you and I kept that information. But it was easy then, when you got to the actual things, for them to separate demographics. So for instance, oh, it seems like there's a problem at Public Works with the facilities. I'm just making something up right now. Or it seems like the younger demographic feels like they're being left out of something. So I'll give you a really good one here.
I wouldn't want to in any way discourage any negative feedback that can be compiled in a big, long list and you don't know where it came from.
And the interesting thing about this was, I think, we had a very high turnout. I forget what the percentage was. Do you remember, Jen?
Well, we had 174 surveys that were returned, and just for Daryl's information, actually, 45% had been employed with the city less than six years. So then obviously 55% would be the over. And Ron, it's one of the handouts, too?
Yep, there's a, that's, yep, that's the, I was just gonna say that.
And Daryl, I see your point, but then I guess on the flip side, too, if part of that work session we're talking about is going to be focused on retention, I think you want to see, okay, someone who's been here for five years is already identifying this as an issue, we're 15 years down the line.
Well, I don't mind the years of service, but if you start to get departments and things like that.
But so you guys never saw though?
Even, no, we even put a range in there, you've been here zero to five.
Yep, and that's why.
So forth versus, yeah, agreed.
That's the nature of every survey at every organization ever.
Absolutely, still gonna try. Would it behoove us to say this year, because 26 is coming after that, to start switching it to annually so that we can actually see if these improvements we're making as a response are having a benefit? I'd like to see it annually.
So I would too, and part of the reason is, you know, with the turnover we're having, we're seeing two years that it's, could be a significant number of...
Subset.
Yeah.
So I guess I'd move to change it to annually, starting with fiscal year 25.
So the one coming up is a starter name?
Yep. Yeah, that's fine.
So change it to annually, starting in 25?
And with that, employees that are leaving?
What?
Policy, if any, do we have for exit surveys?
So our HR department does sit down with the employees, and depending which department, they'll go through a series of questions and, you know, some is, it's really easy, it's, they're retiring. And so they've been here 35 years.
Moving or something? I'm curious, I know this sounds really weird, but it just popped in my head. Can we have an exit interview with the mayor? Is that legal? I mean, they can if they wanted to, right? But we don't have any policy around something like that.
They can have a sit-down with the mayor while they're employed there if they want to.
Open up. Yeah, because if we declare they all do that, it might get a little busy.
It's amazing, it's amazing how many don't want an exit interview. But they've got to come do some, they've got to do some paperwork anyway, so we get a chance to...
As long as you offer.
Well, I think it's just they don't, they're not, I don't have anything to say.
Yeah, I think that's typical.
Do we have a paper option? Like if they weren't comfortable meeting in person, because maybe they had a contentious relationship with their manager or something, do we have a paper option that they can just submit some feedback?
And we can talk to HR about that and see if there's an option.
Actually, that's what we start with. We actually have like a little form that they fill out. And then what we normally do is if those are pretty, you know, if we see those are, we've kind of answered the questions, then we might not have a sit-down with them, but if there's something on there that, okay, we'd kind of like to know a little bit more about what that meant, then HR would actually sit down and have a conversation with the person, so. Yep.
I did a quick question for you guys based on one of the feedback pieces. And it mentioned council members and everyone being more involved and going to departments. Is there something that I could do to help with that versus you guys feeling you have to just randomly reach out to all the staff department heads, try and schedule stuff, or would you like to just handle that on your own? Because I do think it'd be nice, like, I'd like to get everyone more involved, but...
I think it's, like, I've made it my own little goal of making my way through, and I haven't quite got to everybody. But like, I also just love when somebody gets the ball rolling. So if you ever, like, for instance, when I went down and did the thing through the wastewater treatment plan with Tyler, I feel like that was like, who knew that could be such an interesting field trip? And it was, like, and I spent, you know, so like, I think we all should do that. But sometimes I don't, you know, obviously I have to kind of ask staff, like, who do I, where should I go or reach out to, so.
Well, it's kind of as needed or as wanted. I mean, when I first started, I did two years in a row right along with Public Safety on the Saturday before classes started. That's kind of an Iowa experience. And then I did a ride along with the snowplow crew that started at two in the morning or three when it, and that was pretty cool. We see very barren town with six inches of snow on it.
But I also think it's important as you guys, as the leaders, when you walk through to make some small talk once in a while.
Absolutely. Does glare at them?
Well, to be clear, I mean, I think a good clarification of expectations might be helpful. Coming from just a couple of years in, there's a fine balance. If you, let's say you had a rogue council member who wanted to go in and influence staff and just man into the hallways and said, hey, I want this done. The staff is going to see that as tax du jour. Now they're going to start focusing effort on that instead of what they had to do. We don't want manipulation happening. I took that a little bit as, okay. And I will say, every single request I've made to meet with staff has been, hey, when can you make it? We're gonna work around your schedule. Huge benefit, right? When you go down and visit with Public Works, I didn't know that we're still tossing into recycling 500 cans all over the place. So, you know, I mean, just a fun little learning opportunity for doing those. So yes, newly elected, you'll also see with like the MLA, they recommend 60 days, 90 days, 120, I think. Visit with every department in the city within those first six months. Those requests were met with, yeah, let's make it happen. So absolutely do as much as you can, but don't be manipulative.
Yeah, well, I know Danny and I have kind of talked about like, if people have like a particular interest or something, like, you know, saying, okay, like, you're the person who maybe participates more in like attending these commission meetings, and like, maybe you have a stronger connection with this group of people, but to like bring that information back and make sure that we all have that, like, an equal understanding, like you said, of not being like influenced, like, you're just there to observe, but you know, like, being a person that they like are familiar with.
That could be helpful. I think the committee things too, I mean, that's afforded the opportunity for some of the people. I don't know what we're going to advocate for someday down the line for subcommittees and things of that nature, but that was kind of the intention, that people could gain expertise in fact-finding and then be advocating against other council persons if need be. But that area of expertise is certainly something we could strive for these next two years.
Yeah, so I guess I would say in response to your question, like, if you feel like there's an area where you like see a need or if something interesting is happening and you want to be like, hey, you know, over the next couple of weeks, you guys should stop by this and check it out, like, I would definitely appreciate that kind of heads up.
Yeah, okay.
Also, just a side note, is that rating out of five, or what's that rating out of?
Yes, out of five, but if you look in the, in the things, I...
Oh, sorry.
If, if you actually go through there, and for the number of employees that we had, we were pleasantly surprised. You know, we were told, hey, you got to have some thick skin. But when you go through there and you look at, you know, very few people are going to give a five, and then you've got to be really bad to give a one. And so we were typically in that two to three range for many of, on average. So I think that was actually, and you and I was actually really pleased with the results as well.
How does that compare to your survey prior to, you know, similar?
So the survey prior was so long ago, I don't even know, yeah.
Yeah, so there's...
And they were different formats.
Another great reason, if we can get some yearly and some consistency with it and track and trend that. See if, as you're sitting there going back with, okay, so here's the five things that Public Works, for example, said this is the five things you want to focus on as a department. I guess I would hope then see that those five things either A, are not coming up next year, or B, we've made...
Getting addressed.
Strives there. And I mean, that really, I mean, every time I've been involved in engagement plan, like, they'll... Strives there, and I mean, that really, I mean, every time I've been involved in engagement plan, like, those, those five things are built into any staff meeting I've ever had, to make sure that we're keeping those at the forefront, or it's a waste of time for the survey.
Yep.
What about other cities, you do the surveys out there, so are you familiar with any of that?
I, I think it's, I think it gets cyclical with the elected officials, sometimes it goes up and down, I, I think CFU's probably, CFU and you and I'd be the two closest ones, I think both of those do annual surveys, so. But I think it's, it's great to, to work on, so.
Bearing in mind, this survey came on the heels of some what may have been perceived as contentious dialogue around certain topics that I think is not present in this current cycle. Every time I've visited with Public Safety too, I went through this out there, that they're really appreciative for council persons that can come to their awards ceremonies, and come to ride-alongs, and any opportunities for training. They got to lower me down from a scoreboard at the Dome, that was a tough one, you know? But do those opportunities, because that human interaction is exactly what enhances our culture.
So I'll do more to, like, we have a promotion event today for two of the police officers, so I'll do more to just let everyone know when that stuff's going on, so you can
Speaking of that, at one time, it was mentioned, this might have been my either first or second goal setting of a, whatever form of calendar that you want, like, ah, you know, I think at that time I said Google, just because that's what I use. I would love if that actually happened, I feel like that was a thing for a hot minute, and then it just went by the wayside, but it's like, it'd be nice just to be able to look at my calendar, and like, obviously you can marry that into your own personal calendar and be like, oh, I can go here today. Like, to me, that's like, that's how I communicate with my husband, and it's like the easiest thing ever, 'cause he can never say he didn't know what, what I told him. So like, can we do that in council?
Definitely.
Yeah. Maybe I can talk to the manager or something about that, how we can keep it together.
Okay. Enhance our app.
So the next slide I have is actually, I believe it's, it's for C, one C three. Where, where am I at here? Yes, one C three, which is explore restructuring, merging, or eliminating vacant positions. So, a couple slides here, one is with regard to restructuring, and just, this is a history, 'cause this obviously came from an elected official or a council person elect, but back in the eighties, the, the city went from fourteen departments down to five departments, and really that was out of necessity of budgeting. The, the city was really running in the red, so my understanding is they went through some hard times and, and did some budget cutting. In two thousand and six, public safety kind of was a hot topic back then, public safety dissolved, and so they went back to six departments. And two thousand and fourteen, a budget task force was really produced, because we know that we were gonna go through some property tax changes within the state, and so looking at every department from head to toe, the budget task force looked at a number of things, and realized that they recommended, had a whole recommendation, but restructuring into four departments, and how we restructured in two thousand and fourteen, we did that. And then, all staff-driven, and then in two thousand and nineteen, we realized that some of the, the department alignments that were made in two thousand and nineteen, so we looked at changing that to, to swapping a couple of divisions within departments. So for instance, community development had, had engineering, well, traditional engineering is in Public Works, so that went over to Public Works, and some rec things came back to, to engineering, so. One other thing that we just have real quickly is, with regard to this goal, is if you look at any vacant request that comes up, so if somebody retires, or leaves, or quits, or whatever this scenario is, they fill out an evaluation form, it's a four-step form that talks about elimination of the position, downgrade the position, upgrade the position, or, or rehire as-is. So we have big conversations along, okay, what makes sense here? And we've had some, you know, some great successes that have come from that, for instance, our, our graphic designer was in the Hearst Center, and so it was a permanent part-time position, and they weren't utilized maybe as much as they could have been, and so what ended up happening is we hired that position into IT, and now everybody in the city actually utilizes that position. And even moving forward, and I'm skipping ahead here a little bit, but that position also now took on the work of, of Currents, and so they do all of the, the Currents and writing it, helping write the articles and designing it and getting it out, so. I guess that's, that's what I had, if there's other questions, conversation. And then restructuring.
I think as general guidance, keep doing that.
I think it's hard, in my mind, from like people that don't sit in those, in City Hall full-time to, like, you know, how would, I would never feel comfortable making a recommendation, so, yeah, keep doing that, and
So again, we're, you know, it's a, it's a fine balance for us, because we do understand we have a budget, but we also understand there's a workload, and so we wanna make sure that we're meeting the need, but within the budget as well, so.
To be clear, on one C three, I'm looking at that as vacant position, opportunities for dialogue, are you looking at a little broader scope as far as the restructuring of departments?
So, so we did not know what the, we were trying to cover both things, so.
I mean, similarly, I would look at it periodically, I don't know what the cadence is for looking at your org structure, I'm not a fan of increasing load at the top. I would say, like Kelly, I wanna know from the people that are in the trenches doing the work, is this effective? Do, do you have some ideas that need to explore? I don't know how regularly we ask those questions, but
Every vacancy.
Every vacancy?
And I think sometimes it gets frustrating for downline managers when, when, I'll use Public Works and maintenance worker, wanna make, okay, so, so are we gonna hire a permanent part-time, are we gonna possibly combine some and hire a, and so, but yes, pretty much every position that comes available, is this the right fit, is, is this how we move forward?
I would, I would say on those vacant positions, keep doing what we're doing, asking those smaller scope questions. I personally would, would advocate for or support the idea of some recurring, is everything working how it should in two thousand and twenty-eight? You know, that type of thing, so it's a different, broader question. I just wanna make sure I said, hey, let's keep doing what we're doing in the vacant positions, but also I'm in favor of taking a look. I also am not the expert, right, to be able to say, hey, I think we should do it that way.
Well, I think kinda thinking off of that, maybe to add to that work session, would be a conversation about like our, our current departments, do each of those things make sense, you know, 'cause I think, especially as they relate to the goals that we're talking about coming up, you know, 'cause I know we've had a lot of conversation around, you know, the Hearst Center and tourism, and so it's like, if we're changing their scope of work, does it still make sense to have planning with that group? You know, so maybe just some thoughts around that, and we could talk about that at that work session.
You're hitting that right up my head, 'cause I wonder about our parks and drag, with the green space and the bike and pedestrian commission just coming online.
Yeah.
Does that need a little more dedicated attention, so?
Well, I was thinking too, with us looking to do the visioning, updating our planning as a whole, that's, I think it's hard to talk about the structures without understanding what's our strategy, what are we trying to emphasize? So I think that'd be a good chance for us, as we do that planning through this year, is to look at, okay, now that we know what our goals are, how are we making sure we're set up appropriately? So I think it'd be good to make sure we kinda build that into that conversation.
And I wanna make sure, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but like, I, I, I understand, like, I understand budgeting, and, but we, if we're gonna spend money, I guess I don't want it to always have the focus of cutting, like, I wanna make sure that we're still a great employer and that we are good for our citizens, and if, even if that makes, or is the tough conversation of, do we need to add something? You know, I just, and I, I think we're all probably, but I just wanna make sure I say that out loud, I don't, my goal personally is to be the best we can be and to be a great employer, and I understand that that might not always be cutting.
The work doesn't go away, and we want things to be accomplished, to say, well, when that position goes away, will that work diggo away?
And
So we gotta be careful, well, now that other, someone else already had work they were doing, if we've evaluated them properly and, and monitored properly,
Where's that job?
Where's that, where's that work at?
I guess the only reason I said it is because, as a body
Sound description changed.
Yeah. We're in a position, or we're in a situation right now where we can actually be together, it's like, I just don't, I wanna say that out loud, that that, in my mind, it's not always cutting. If we're gonna spend money, let's spend it so we actually get a great product, and if that means spending a little more to get a really great product, as opposed to spending money and getting a cruddy product, I'd rather get the great product.
That's right, so they turn on your investment.
So one of the things that was, and I had a comment in here for a little bit later in the presentation, but it was when Carlson Detman went through and they looked at our structure, they said, wow, this is really efficient, and, and it's, it's really more of a pyramid-type structure where your top isn't really heavy, and so when we make those investments, I hope that we're thinking about making those at, at the working level where, where that work is getting done, and not the administration of the, of the work.
When was their review, was that the two thousand and eighteen?
Eighteen, yeah.
This, might relate to this, maybe not, but when I first got on council, some of the longtime counselors ahead of me were talking about this list of cost-saving ideas, was that something that you enticed from the public to come forward with all kinds of ideas, and then compile a list and work their way out of it, makes sense?
So in that budget task force, there is a task force of probably fifteen, for lack of a memory, but employees that went through, and nobody's, nobody's department or was off limits, and you went through there, and, and people explained how operations worked, and there was a number of things that just came out of it, and I'll, I'll use a really simple one that we've incorporated today, and it's, it's worked in Public Safety, is, is one-sided garbage pickup. Well, it's created less wear and tear, more, they're more efficient when they go through there, so it was simple things like that, but there were other things like restructuring departments, or, so...
But this wasn't asking the public to come forward, or was it?
They could.
Actually, there was, there was some public input and, and public bids, and then, yep, they, I, I don't think it was a lot, but there, but there was some public input for that.
How long ago was that?
Was that fourteen, I think it's?
Yeah, it had to have been before fourteen, so I'm guessing like thirteen maybe is when we did that budget task force.
'Cause I think the report was fourteen.
So, I'll try something like that again, and then hear from the public.
So we're good on that one, 'cause I don't wanna cut off conversation, but, so if you remember last year, we started talking a little bit about staffing requests, and as we move forward with, this is kind of the list that staff's come up with this year, as you remember, we had a number of staffing requests that were there last year, the very top one, property acquisition, was one that, that the, the council decided they wanted to wait a year on. Property acquisition is, is one that, we're not quite sure how, what we'd look at, and we've talked about it, but it's a person that would help us attain, whether it's permanent property acquisition, or easements, or those type of things. Right now, anytime we enter a project where we have to do that, we sign a contract, and those contracts, this position for one year would pay for one of those contracts.
So if I remember any of those conversations, basically we're paying for it already, we're just contracting out loud, discussing the work, bringing it on staff.
Also, didn't we also, didn't we say that that person wouldn't always be busy enough to do that, that we'd want something else for them, so segue through it in the meantime?
We haven't talked thoroughly enough about it, but you know, one of the things that we talked about is, is that person a, in, in with the law office, what's, what's the position, I'm trying to think of, it's a
Like a paralegal?
Paralegal, you know, so there are some other legal things they can do when, when property acquisition isn't there. So that's one of the positions that, that we're actually still interested in, in filling. We talked a little bit about the policy administration specialist the other night, that's a, that's a position that we've talked about for probably a couple of years, but just not here recently, we've got examples from other cities, didn't even know what to call it until we started getting some of these examples from some of the other cities, and looking at potentially having that person do special projects, for instance, there may be a project that expands through the course of all of the, all four or five different departments, and have that person take it on. One of the things that's always challenging is when you have a number of folks in a department, is whose project is it? Because some of those things get lost in the weeds if you don't have, this is my project, I'm gonna go ahead and see it all the way to the end, so anyway, that's, that's what, that was that job description that was on the other night, we knew that this was coming forward, so. One of the other things that's interesting about this particular position is, we've had some really good interns here in the last couple of years, and those interns are one of, are looking at staying here in Cedar Falls, and as one of the goals we talk about a little bit later is, you know, how do you maintain Cedar Falls people here, and, and we've got some good people that, if they don't get this type of position here, they're gonna be leaving. Rec supervisor for aquatics, so we know, Chris Shontag was gracious enough to tell us, you know, hey, I'm leaving in, I think it's May of twenty-five. So what we'd like to do is try to get an aquatic supervisor that's gonna replace Chris, hired on, so he can go through a season at the pool, knowing what the pool is before just all of a sudden, hey, we're gonna hire you in May, and good luck, so be able to at least go down there for a season. So this would be an expense that we would just have for the, for the one year, but it's also one that the full eighty-five thousand, they've talked about how, you know what, if we have this extra position, we may be able to reduce some other things in there as well, so. School resource officer, this is one that just in passing, Director Birdy and the superintendent have had, and they're talking about wanting another potential school resource officer when the new high school gets up there, they'd like one for just the high school, and then, right now, we have one that covers seven elementaries, two middle schools, and a, so this may be another thing that we're looking at moving forward with as well. So these right now are some of the asks that, that we're looking at, that we be asking if you would be interested in adding those to the budget.
Products are one compared to what Waterloo has, as far as that SRO coverage?
Waterloo has, they have six officers and a sergeant, and then Waterloo reimburses them for half, they give three hundred and seventy-five, their contract's three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
We have one for seven elementaries.
Two middle schools and a high school.
Seven elementary, nine high, a high school, alternative high school, and then they do help out in St. Pat's Valley Luther, a little when they're called there, so.
Do we get reimbursement from the school as well?
We currently, we've done it for thirty-one years, it started out, we just got seven thousand a year, but that's back on a cap, costs thirty thousand. Then it went to twenty-four thousand a year about six years ago, so that's what we get now, and really our hope is that, I guess the thing I've talked about with the principals or with the superintendent, you know, off is, you know, what, could we end up with two, two SROs, you pay for one, we pay for one, something like that? So getting pretty close to a fifty percent.
I'd, I'd like to see that position priority, I don't think that's even remotely acceptable coverage for a city of this size.
The only question I'd have, this is not at all insinuating, I don't know exactly what all goes into Chris's job for the rec supervisor one, is that a position that requires that year of training to get up to speed on it, or are there pool managers for hire, or is it way more than just that?
So, so I think, you know, if you just talk about the pool and running the pool and the staff, there's probably, but, but I think each pool is unique in the fact that, so the way they pumps and the, the maintenance of it, the mechanical portion is, is the part that, that I think they need the background in.
Are they gonna be diving into anything with the Cedar Falls pool as well, as a backup to their asset, because that's gonna be our user space?
So right now, the, the, the maintenance of that pool would be the school districts, so, but I also know what the, what the school district's doing with that probably isn't probably isn't as, as good as we'd like it, I think they have some of their janitorial staff just get certified, so, so, and that's not to say they can't do a good job, but I think when you have a, a brand-new system like that, you probably want top-notch people, so that's not to say that this wouldn't necessarily help out with some of that.
This might be a throwaway question, might not mean anything, or might just be a distraction, has there been any conversation with them about our person helping with some of their maintenance and upkeep as a cost share?
Yeah, so, but it's, it's kinda back and forth, okay, who Okay, whose pool is it?
Yeah.
You know, and who's in whose building, and...
Yeah.
So, it's some of those conversations as well. I think we'll get there as we get a little bit...
A lot of it was our pool when they asked for money.
That's a very good point.
I would say in that first one, I think, just basing off the previous conversation, because I think if I remember right, it was basically saying, if we're planning to grow and have things happening, we're, it's cost-effective to just hire the person, it's just where we were at, that, that time, it was kind of, eh, we don't know if we have enough work. I'd say maybe if we could just see what is that return on investment, and just, seems like we were pretty close to, it's probably good that...
And to clarify for this one, these will come forward specifically?
Well, they would come forward in the budget, and so, once they're in the budget, budget and/or job class. So if we have, like, the rec supervisor, if we have that in there, we've already got the job class, so, the only way it would come forward is the budget. School resource officer, that would be just as another public safety officer, it's just where they're assigned.
So we were all good with the school resource officer. Do we vote for this as a group, or are we going down the line items on this?
I didn't see anybody else with a station tonight.
Thumbs up to the whole thing.
I'm good with the whole thing now.
I ask one more SRO question, correct?
Yes, sir.
In the summer months, then, they just function as a cop for you?
Yes, they're not.
We get the SRO in the summer months, so...
And what helps?
It bolsters your numbers on the back end.
And the unique thing about SRO too, is, you know, the, anything that's happening in Cedar Falls, we're handling it anyway, whether we have an SRO or not, so really, it's a benefit to us if you can get any cost sharing.
Yeah.
Because we have to handle it anyway.
And there's a split now?
There is a split.
You said there is a split in the cop right now, between the city and the school district?
Yeah, right now, they just pay twenty-four thousand, and, you know, an officer with benefits is, I think, around one hundred and thirteen.
Plus, we could use an extra cop in June to help with fireworks support.
Well, when you, when you, when you get those SROs in the summer, that's, that's peak vacation time, so it's, it's just a helm.
Absolutely. So do you have what you need for this?
I do.
Danny, were you gonna say something else?
No.
Thank you for asking.
So, another topic that was here was employee programs, which is Goal 1C6, and so, here's just one of the programs that we have, that, this was on the books for a long time, but just a couple of years ago in FY22, it was never funded. So, we started actually funding it, and so, it's actually some tuition re-assistance, and so, it's helped out a lot of employees. You can see we have three employees the first year, six the second year, and one so far this year, and what it is, is it's employees that maybe they have their associate's degree, but the job class that they want to work in is a bachelor's degree, so they, they want to go back to school and get that. So, it's, it's a program that we have for, that our max is fifty-two-hundred dollars a year, because that's the IRS cap on that, so...
So is this if they, we train them, but what if they leave after we train them? Do they get a clawback?
Yep, actually, they sign a contract, and for, it's a four-year graduated, so if they stay the full four years, they don't pay anything back, but if they stay two years, they pay half of it back.
And it's four years after the payment, or four years after the degree?
Well, so, it's kind of interesting, but it depends, because they may have multiple years, so it's kind of after the last payment.
After the last payment?
After, after the, because, no, let's say it takes them three years, so, but, for the first payment out, the fifty-two-hundred, that's four years, and then maybe there's another one that's fifty-two-hundred, so that's a...
I'm just kidding, you know, if they take seven years to go through school, then they're gonna have to give us twelve in order to not pay back all of it? I'd say maybe keep it per payment.
And that's what it is. So it wouldn't be all of it.
Four years, have stayed four years.
Four years from last payment.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, because then they qualify to earn what they study for.
That's a great program.
Now, with all these things where thumbs up money, have we have, do we have an idea with the increase in property tax? And the, I should say, valuations? If we use the same millage rate, how much more money will we have? Eight point five percent?
Well, we kind of went in that, over that a little bit the first night, with the financial stuff, but, until the first part of January, we're not gonna know.
Well, there's all the rollback, and, you know, but just, if last year we got fifty million and it's up eight and a half percent, we got so much more money to work with the cover services. I mean, we can thumbs up all of this, they all sound good, but when rubber hits the road, will we have the funds for it?
Well, again, remember, you guys are gonna give us the thumbs up on all of this. We're gonna go back and take all of those financial policies, make sure that, okay, if the council said they don't want to exceed this, or exceed that, make sure, whatever those financial policies dictate, and we may come up and say, hey, there's too much, we're gonna have to cut something, or you guys are gonna have to say, yeah, so...
And this is one that's already in the budget, so this isn't new money, and this is already in the budget. I mean, for the past couple of years, we've been budgeting for this already.
I've just heard that.
I'm surprised there's not more people that take advantage of that.
No, this is, if you can see, it's FY22.
Jen, is that typical, there's that few number of people that take advantage of that?
Yeah, well, I think, you know, it's fairly new, like Brown said, and I will say, to this point, it's pretty much been public safety, and I think some of that is because they can kind of see that clear path to promotion. I think for some of our other departments, there isn't exactly that clear path that there is in public safety, but we've tried to encourage, I mean, we try, like, we try to remind our employees, like, a couple times a year, like, hey, don't forget the tuition, you know, program.
Or their job class already requires them to have that level of education?
Right, and they already had it. So, but in fact, but, you know, like we said, there's only one so far, well, like, a couple days ago, I signed one, and just today, I signed another reimbursement, so we've already gotten two since I made the slide, so...
So if you have, so if you have something that's more, say, manual labor versus, you know, management of that department where the manual labor takes place, this could encourage them to go from the blue collar, gray collar, to white collar.
That's exactly what it's, what it's designed for, because, and we go back to the employee survey, one of the feedbacks that we have is, I don't see a clear, a clear path for advancement. And so, this, here's some educational opportunities where, you know, if you're a maintenance worker, but at some point you want to be a supervisor, maybe you can get your AA degree, and then, after that, if you want to actually be the division manager, hey, go on and get your bachelor, yeah. So...
Attention.
So, another employee program that we have that we take a lot of pride in, and, so, I know we don't always, you work for a municipality, and sometimes you don't think, hey, it's, they care about their employees or something, but we take great pride in not only giving, making sure that our employees are not only physically healthy, but also mentally healthy. I could tell you a number of stories, but because of HIPAA stuff, we, I can't. But, just how, we've got a good group of people that, that look out for the employees' mental health and some of their wellbeing. This EAP is, is a program that, that we try to encourage some employees to do. We actually don't know who participates in it, but they're eligible for some free counseling, whether it's, I think it says right here, depression, marital issues, grief, financial stress, substance abuse, any of those, so, we really encourage employees to do that. So, that's, that's not really a new thing either, it's just a, something that we want to make sure everybody's aware of.
I'm used to EAP in my life, and it was wonderful, so I give all the support to that.
So, another, and this one's gonna be kind of an easy one, because our DEI specialist, she's been working on a number of initiatives, and what we're anticipating is having her come to a council meeting, committee meeting work session, whichever one you guys would like, and kind of talk about what's been going on, and, since she started, some of the initiatives she's taking, and, and moving that forward, so. If you guys are all right with that, we'll just add that to the work session list.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, and then, we didn't really have a lot for this last one here, which is, oh, we've removed 1C8, because it's really covered in, in 3C2B. We're gonna have a couple of these tonight, where...
It's really fast.
Well, we'll have a few of these tonight that we actually will probably cover in a group, so for instance, strategic plan, the, all of those plans, and all of that, that we're gonna talk about tomorrow at one time, or at the next session at one time, just because it's gonna get confusing if we try to do it over two nights, and what priorities are, and some of those things, so. I guess we're, we're on to Goal Two, so...
So we wanna just check on Goal One. There's anything we add in for the work session?
When you had made our original list, we included a mention of drug screening, discussing drug screening, and that would be good to add in the discussion.
I love that. I see you do have the notes from the first night, we wanted to look at the list of the new things you had put on, to make sure we hit all of them, if there was anything? Yep. There was a few, like, was that Goal One? Public transit, someone mentioned...
Oh, is that where, okay, sorry, yeah, I would like to make sure we have a discuss, a work session on public transit. How can that be better?
Just high level, like, how are we looking at strategizing, what we're working on building?
And obviously, I don't pretend to know everything about it, but it's like, I feel like lots of places are realizing that maybe the way things were done, especially communities our size, are we really, we're investing in something that, is it functioning where it's usable for most people? If not, how do we get it to be better?
Yeah.
I think I, like, read an article once about, like, if you invest, just, like, it was a similar-sized city to ours, that's why I wrote it, or read it, and it was about their troubles or problems with their public transit, and their conclusion in the end was like, okay, we're spending this much money and hardly anyone's using it, they use their brain and probably somebody else's brain that was, you know, smarter than, like, myself, and a little more money, and boom, they actually have a very, much more effective system, you know?
So I think you and I have talked about that before, Ron and I have talked about it, I've talked with David Sturridge about it, you know, and we probably both, I see it's on the list here twice, so it's probably where it came from. I'm curious, and Ron already has some ideas about how we can streamline things and make it more, more effective, and I don't know if we're gonna work it out in the work session, but you're right, there are other ways of making it effective. And I don't want to start opening this up, but what Ron's thought was like an Uber-type, where you call for public transport, you don't wait in North Cedar for the bus that's never gonna come, because they don't have a route to North Cedar, but you still have some access to a service.
And there are models of other communities that have done that, and there's ways to work in LMI to that as well, so...
Sounds like, does it release enough interest to say, put it on the work sessions?
Yeah, I touched on it last year, it doesn't have to just be that. I'm just curious, does it fit in Goal One under foster organizational excellence, or quality life, or effectiveness?
I think at this point, I was gonna say, how some of these...
Okay, just have a follow-on on that. We don't really have a line item to add for Goal One, so.
Anything else for Goal One before we move on?
Subsidies.
All right, Goal Two.
Goal Two, here we go. So, as you see on Goal Two, a number of those right away are green, so, thought we would just go ahead and, you know, blank slide up here, just accuse me to, to let you know that those are what may wanted to be discussed, or...
I think, I think this might have been, I just put all of them, and this was really something, or through them was all stuff I felt as mayor was really a part of my responsibility, was just that effective. Making sure we're just moving forward, creating policy, helping staff, changing policy, and just having that working engagement.
This is a way that, and I know I'm not, like, lots of people have said it before me, but I'm just gonna say it in this venue, like, to me, I think of the mayor, and before I was even, like, you know, I'm, before the thought of sitting in this body was even a thing, I always think of the mayor as the quarterback of the team, and that's, I guess, subjective, or is that the right word? That's up to the person who's sitting in that spot, so, because we're all sitting here, I think we could be a lot better functioning body for our community if the full-time person has those, has what these are, you know, these highlighted spots.
Yeah.
And not just for, and when I, I mean, like, our whole community, our citizens, our staff, us, maybe we can be a healthier bunch, so...
Well, yeah, it's kind of the discussion of full-time, part-time mayor. You know, it's like, you want to be a ceremonial kiss babies and open up creative options or something?
That's what I said before.
You know, or do you want to, no, that's, that's the thing.
Not anymore.
So I would definitely say, this is something that's my role, I commit, just making it a serious priority.
Agenda to most, you know, development or...
Do you want us to say thumbs up?
Yeah.
That we agree, that this is what we, well, we're hoping that you're going to use as kind of a guidebook for you. I'm good, I'm good.
And I think we should adjust ordinance to show, it's, the mayor is the quarterback, not the CEO.
Yeah.
Quarterback is a more effective title.
I don't understand the football reference, so if we could...
I was going between coach, quarterback, but CEO.
So I'll just take it as a direction from you guys, that yes, you support me putting mine.
Just don't be Iowa's offensive coordinator.
Careful with those contentious topics.
Defense try to trap a ward.
So, I'm gonna just move on to the next one, which is 2B3, which is consider holding, when timely, joint meetings with Waterloo City Council, Black Hawk County Supervisors, Cedar Falls Community School District, and University of Northern Iowa on matters of mutual interest.
Well, they've been so successful the last couple of years.
I think part of the problem with that has been that maybe they weren't very regular, and like, they're, you know, those are very specific topics when we've met. I like this because we talk about regionalism, we obviously, I mean, I think we know, like, how everybody's working to make this area better, and I feel like, even if it's just quarterly or twice a year that we meet with these folks, and I guess, again, I would maybe kind of, because I would think that this body's going to be conversing with our mayor, so, I mean, I don't think it's gonna harm us to have conversation with these folks. We're all working to the greater good, I think.
It's great to do this, but you want an agenda, have a work session.
To just talk about fireworks, and...
We did that one.
Right.
Is there?
Yeah. That's what I mean, to just talk about one subject, fireworks, and then it just all didn't work out anyway, and then to, to, you know, look at things like our...
Depends on the topic, whether you're gonna budge from their position or we budge from our position, is kind of what, in the fireworks thing, they wanted to do, two days or three or...
Well, it was a bit further in discussions on, like, on 911.
Yeah.
So, how well did that go, you know, we just...
I guess where I think of it is, is we're just kind of stating that that's, to me, a goal, so like, if we, I trust that between the conversations that the mayor has with us and community leaders, like, I guess I trust that you could make a call of what we, not just you, but this is a joint meeting, so, the leadership of all bodies, it's not us bossing somebody, it's us having a conversation, right?
Yeah.
I'm definitely for doing it in a more formal format possible.
Yeah, because there are some more...
With a reoccurring timeframe.
Yeah, because I know there's some topics at the airport, and some of those that are regional conversations that we should be more in tune with, and...
And I think, you know, kind of, which the next one is to expand on existing collaborations, like, I think of Dustin's idea for a children's museum, like, I would really like to, you know, consider a clearly defined group with you and I, where we have a relationship, we're both putting in funding, and this is the goal we're working towards, because I feel like what we've been doing for a long time is just like, yeah, we support you and you support us. support us. And that's the end of the conversation. Yeah, you know, it's like, I think we need to start like, really creating, looking at what our goals are and looking at what their goals are, and how can we make this a tangible thing where we're really trying to check off a success together. And, you know, it's like, yeah, we can have joint meetings, but like you guys said, it's like, well, if we're on totally opposite pages, does the joint meeting serve a purpose? And then it's like, you know, are we just doing this because we wanna like, look like we're working together?
We're show burning.
Yeah, but we're not actually, you know. So I think exploring some ideas to have some very clear successes together.
Intention.
Yeah.
So, you know, I can take these more as kind of direction for some focus area that, because I've already met with President Nook, I know a lot of county supervisors, so I can at least start talking with them on what would that partnership look like, and bring some things back to you guys on what can that substantive partnership with you and I look like.
Do that. Okay. So we're taking three and five together, and saying, good, go, three and five?
Yeah.
So on the, this is one that I talked about a little bit ago, community-wide strategic plan. We'll actually talk about this when we start talking about all of the other plans and those type of things, so everybody understands exactly what a strategic plan is versus a comp plan versus rezoning, and then try to figure out what is the council's priority. So instead of trying to do those over two nights, we put those into one. I hope that's all right.
And that included the parks plan, all those, we figured we'd just bucket that conversation.
Public information and social media, which is two B, continue using the city's quarterly, current websites, cable vision. This was also highlighted by one of our, someone at this table, or, so, is there any other?
Which column?
So eight.
So I, this is something that I brought up. I think that, you know, there really, how we communicate with citizens is changing, and I think we need to make sure we're paying special attention to that changing communication process, you know, whether that's using, you know, like, social media, at this point, you can't really do it for free. You have to pay for it to actually be successful, you know, and are we funding that in any way? And, you know, I also think that some council folks have used social media and some haven't, and you know, like, how does, what does that messaging look like? And, you know, just that there's kind of this, overall, there's, I think, a little bit of confusion. Like, I know Amanda just had a great article in the Courier for her 20 under 40, and she kind of talked about how she really thinks her job is more about the way the city communicates and that the city council issues are separate. And so I think if we could all like, better understand that relationship and what our roles are, I think that would be really good.
So, yeah, I kind of went into that a little bit, but this is the next goal. So this is more Amanda's job. We have, so she works with all the departments right now. She actually reaches out to Public Safety, Rec, Hearst, and those guys run their own social media. But the thing that we want to make sure of is that the city is a consistent message. We don't want Public Safety saying something that Rec is saying something different. So we want to make sure that all of those, so she's worked very well with them, and I think that's, that's a good thing. I'm just gonna be very candid, there's been, nobody at this table, but we have had problems in the past with elected officials wanting certain messages to go out. And we've really had to push back, because if that's not the body, the city council's position, that Amanda doesn't print that out on social media or anything. It's gotta be, it's really gotta be, what is the city council's position, or updates for projects, or those type of things. So we want to make sure that that happens, so.
Could that be, I don't know how much currents cost, but I think it's worth looking at what's actually being absorbed and what's been helpful. Both of the last couple election cycles, communication has been cited as a disappointment of the electors, so we as a city need to do better.
I love currents.
Yeah, I love.
My favorite thing when it shows up.
Yeah.
You know, so let's just talk about currents for a second. Currents is another tool that we have, I think is, is very good. But one of the things, it's a city communication piece, and we often get hit up from a lot of outside entities that want to either advertise or put some, and we've resisted that, just because it's really meant to be a city communication piece, so.
Yep.
Worth evaluating, right?
What are we evaluating?
To see what else we need to add in, social. I mean, we don't have a Whitney's Twitter account, but that'd be awesome to have someone savage on our Twitter feed.
Daryl's TikTok of the floss. I thought that was pretty good.
What happened?
Daryl flosses.
We have to find that immediately.
We will look for that.
It's the new website background, that's all I.
Daryl doesn't even know what the floss is.
He ain't the only one.
That's my dentist, I don't floss.
Anyway, instead of having that hard copy, making that.
Electronic.
Yeah.
Or to supplement by adding whatever's rational, right? Like, if currents is hidden in the target market, it's helpful, then that's a cost we keep doing. If it's astronomical and nobody else reads it, maybe we shift. Or maybe we just add in what's relevant on the internet.
It's nice to get, say, a graduation announcement in paper, you can put it on the fridge, you got it. You got the currents, put it on your desk, and you read it later, and you refer back to it for phone numbers of us.
Because I actually.
I leave it on my coffee.
Yeah, it stays in my coffee.
And I see a few newsletter.
Oh, I love a CFU newsletter, I think.
You bind enough of.
I don't do that.
Could I make a recommendation, though, for this? I do think, I'd like to be able to tell staff, because I think we're all in agreement, we want to do better with communications, to say, even as part of the budget, look at what are some things we could maybe do if we allocated a little more to bring back to budgeting.
Yes.
We just fix up our website. Amanda's ideas of having a liaison in departments is great. You know, consistent messaging and marketing is important for every entity.
So one other challenge that we have is Channel 15, which is great. I mean, it's one of those things that is out there. Denny and his staff, I think they're second to none. I was at a couple different events, and you go, wow, they, our guys really do a good job. But the viewership is starting to get down there. And one of the things that happened this year is, is when, when there's events that we could upload to you and I, we don't necessarily up to, or not you and I, YouTube, when, we don't necessarily upload those right away, because we're hoping people take the subscription, because that's how we fund our Channel 15, and so.
Okay, I'm ignorant to that. I want to learn more there, because I, how do I, how do I watch it? What are you hoping they do? Do you want them to?
So do you have cable from CFU?
Okay, so that was a very, that was a very, that was a very hard decision for me.
No, got it.
Yes, I, I, I am one of those folks that after years of, I left, and, yeah.
So now, if you, if you go on and you can watch the council meetings on YouTube.
Sure, but is there a way that I, as not a current CFU subscriber, could?
Cable subscriber.
I'm sorry, CFU cable subscriber, could, you know how sometimes, like, I don't know, my husband.
So we've actually been talking about, how can we do that? How can we offer that?
Because that's what kept me.
Through a streaming or something, but it's.
I can offer an example. So the debates, when they recorded those, because I remember like, the day after, I asked Denny, I'm like, hey, can you give me the link to that? I didn't see it. He's like, well, we have to wait a week to post it, because if they just put all their content instantly up on YouTube.
Of course.
So I think that's the thing we probably need to look at, is that balance of.
And I would love to pay, like, I would love to pay for that, because seriously, that's what kept me, that was a hard decision. And the one thing that kept me was.
Is that, is that through Steve Bernard, Bedard, or is that through?
So I think.
I was trying to try to encourage people who are actually paying for it to get the access to it.
But it kind of is through CFU, so we're gonna be working with Denny and CFU and some of those to try to figure out, is there a streaming platform? Is there another platform that we can offer that's maybe at a, at a lower subscription? Because there's even things where sporting events, Grandma and Grandpa want to see little Johnny play football tonight, but hey, they can't see it because they don't have, or they're outside of the community. Well, you know, there could be another funding source if they're subscribing to some of those things.
Right now, correct me if I'm catching up, but CFU Channel 15 is only paid for by cable subscriptions, unless we take on the cost center of subsidizing.
I believe that is correct, so.
And I think it needs more people, so we're gonna have to talk about absorbing that cost center at some point, or increasing the subscription rate.
And I think that's what, what I'm trying to say, is we're probably gonna be bringing something back to you, is what, what that looks like, we don't know yet. But I know Denny and I had probably an hour conversation one day, and it was just a passing in the hall, and so we know that there's.
We'd all love to have it, let's see how it affects the numbers.
For eight and nine, are these just thumbs up to continue, knowing that your team's gonna be bringing back some plans and recommendations?
If everyone's okay with it, can we add in there, like, giving them the ability to say, bring back some ideas for budget stuff that they wanted to do more communications?
Yes.
Yes. Is that something that needs to be changed in the document, or just knowing that is that fine?
I think that's good.
Okay.
So two C, A, two C, A, and D are now, a couple others. Two C, A, they're both under University of Northern Iowa objectives, continue to collaborate with you and I and address public safety, parking, College Hill neighborhood equitable payment for city services, sharing of facilities, and elimination of duplication of governmental services.
Is this the point where I could ask questions about sharing of facilities? The evidence room idea from, I kind of felt a sense that you didn't get too excited about that, the way you answered it.
Well, I can give you the quick history is, so we've always had, we've always had our own evidence room. We have our own evidence processing, we're good. We have everything we need. But what happened, two, three years ago, they had some ARPA funds or something like that. The Sheriff's Department was gonna build a really nice, big modern facility where you could maybe put in a bunch of cars at a time. Or if you had a series of crime went through the, through the whole county area, you could maybe put all the cars there at the same time, there might be some value to that.
Cars as in storing.
Accident.
Storing and.
Stolen.
So. Keep them out of the weather inside, so the evidence don't damage.
They asked for letters of support, and we gave them a letter of support, and it said that it was something they were gonna build and fund. And then I've never heard another word about it until Dan Trunka was standing in front of the city council a couple weeks ago. But I have since learned that now Supervisor Trunka is leading an effort to maybe help with this joint evidence storage thing, possibly between Waterloo Police Department and the Sheriff's Department. And something that maybe regionally for them makes a lot of sense. So we have it, it's just if you had a big, major crime stream maybe involving all over the county, then maybe it would make the most sense that, you know, we get all the cable going together.
Also.
Have it patrol evidence. Does that go then?
Take it out to the sheriff.
Well, in this prime evidence, okay.
But it would be a nice funding opportunity if the county took over the EMA.
Yeah.
And then it could be, it could be all absorbed.
Every time they're budgeting.
Yep, we are.
Is there any, just I think, for us new people probably, is there any, and it was talked about a long time ago, about the city providing all the safety for campus and the cost effectiveness and all that? Has there ever been any reason to relook at that, or is it just?
That really just kind of predates me, you know, I think probably in Iowa City and Cedar Falls, I've always probably had those discussions through the decades, but Ron probably knows more about that.
Yeah, usually universities are not interested, and part of that is that they, they say their policing is different, the way they handle students, some of those things. So I know it's been broached at least a couple of times, and it gets so far, and I think then it just kind of fizzles out. So at this point, we have not.
But say, in the vein of continue to collaborate, see if there's any, in the vein of continuous improvement, let's continue to find out if there's anything else we can capitalize upon. They've got like, two officers patrolling all the time, you know, if they need supplements as they add more students, et cetera. I want to make sure that we collaborate, just continue to investigate those. Well, we've worked with you and I, Sheriff's Department of Waterloo, all the time, right? We have, you and I have one detective, and that detective is through our building probably twice a week. We work with them all the time, we do their marijuana testing. So we work very closely with you and I, but kind of like Ron said, they have a different role when it comes to policing and protecting the student. I'm just curious if that constant attention to it might help them attract the student body as well. Based on some of the rumors that are out there, you know, that, hey, even the city surrounding it is paying close eye, making sure your kids are safe.
I think that's the opposite of that.
Making sure your kids can't get away with it.
Yeah.
We just bought a drug dog, don't you know?
Good to go for those?
Uh, D was engage with Iowa Workforce Development, you and I, to explore opportunity to retain recent you and I grads in Cedar Falls. So we talked a little bit about that with that position, but I think there are some additional things, and some of it is opportunities that we have in our economic development and keeping some of those grads here.
And I've worked a lot with the career services that you and I am Iowa Workforce, so I'm glad to meet with them and build on that.
All right, great. Ron, real quick, though, two C, two D, does it make more sense like we did some previous years to broaden that, so that we're not too limited? I mean, I'm not saying Iowa Workforce Development doesn't help, but are we leaving out? Couldn't we just say, engage with relevant entities to explore opportunities to you and I grad here? If CFDC or Grove somebody has some value to it, we don't want to skip out on those investigations.
Sounds like grocery value, I'm not sure if that's the last few years, but I used to run them, but the intern events during the summer for all the students that stayed around the area, so we can run that.
Is everybody good with that language? Engage with relative entities to.
Is it okay that we like, maybe list the relative entities that we think of? Because I feel like that's important to kind of.
Say like, those three and all others.
Yeah, because I like to, because sometimes, I think it's nice to read.
CFDC, grocery value, Iowa Workforce Development, you and I, and other relevant entities.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, great. Even some of the big companies are all trying to hold on to people, so that there's people who work.
And in some cases, that work might mean, thank you for not messing it up.
All right, so we have an edit to that one.
I am on to two C, three B, which is support improvements to parking and pedestrian traffic near public schools in accordance with safe routes to school, examples such as, such as design Orchard Hill Elementary, Southdale Elementary, and Lincoln School. So these are just some examples of where we've worked with the Safe Routes to School Plan and moving forward, whether it's building sidewalks, completing bridges, as we reconstructed the road in front of, and Round Street. You know, it's still not perfect in front of Orchard Hill Elementary, but it's a heck of a lot better than it was a number of years ago. Same thing with Southdale Elementary on Orchard Hill. So we take those opportunities as, as we can, as we move forward, so.
Washington, we stopped at seven, eight street. Are we doing it? Are we gonna continue on through south?
Jase, what's the timeframe on that?
Uh, I don't know, I don't know that it's a five-year plan. We're talking south of like, eighth street.
Is it eight? We went, seven or eighth, I think.
Six to eight.
And then on down.
What program is necessary. We jumped a little bit, but you were asking on B. We jumped a little bit, but you were asking on B, do you need support safe routes?
Yep, that's kind of what this is, reconstructing.
Is there anything intentional, I would say intentional about there, about just because it's been brought a lot this year, traffic speeds, especially near where kids are crossing, is that part of the safe routes is just knowing where kids are crossing?
Yep, and that has, looking at that, and so, you know, that's, that's going to be one of the interesting conversations that we have is, is moving forward, we have a proposal in here that will talk about a traffic management plan and some of those things, so.
Does it address the 12th Street concerns?
Well, the safe routes to school, there's criteria typically in like these management programs that, you know, how many kids are crossing, how many, where's, where's distance from the school, all of those things, and is there, is there a safe route, so.
I know I've looked it over, but I didn't remember seeing anything in there about like walking school buses, I guess I'm just saying out loud, do we encourage, or is there some facility through which we can encourage, working with PTAs and local schools to develop those types of activities, so a walking school bus that takes the preferred route through a controlled intersection rather than popping up another sign would be really like we do. Do we have that in that document?
So I think that's what, it's, it's coming up in a little bit, but that's what that management program that we're going to discuss.
I just jump in and said an intercomp management program trying to encourage walking buses and things like that with the safe routes to school implementation.
I think if we could localize it.
I'd also say the 12th Street intersection that popped up, it didn't just pop up, we created a situation where Main Street was shut down, 18th Street was shut down, the interchange coming off of 58 was shut down, so it put a lot of pressure on 12th Street, so we did need to address it somehow, and next year is going to be a whole different situation. High school traffic's going to be different, construction's going to be different.
Main Street's going to be shut down from that intersection.
What's the future, it'd be great if West 18th Street went all the way to Union Road, but is it probably not physically possible, so, you know, maybe it could go a little farther, at least, at least up, to take some of that, there's still going to be pressure on 12th Street, and it's going to continue to increase as we get more development out that way, so.
I'm sure our citizens would want us to not close every three good towns.
Yeah, that was part of what I would like to, the thing too is, is how do we work with our construction people in the world that say, the citizens I talk to say, when you tell me you're going to work on a street, doesn't matter if it's two blocks long, or three blocks long, or three miles long, it closes in April and it doesn't open until December, and then all of a sudden, they all kind of start to open up, why don't you address it as this one is three blocks long, get your resources there? Well, it gets a little more complicated than that, doesn't it, Chase?
It always is.
Then they want to say, well, if I do that three blocks, am I then getting the three miles that you say is going to happen in June? So how do we coordinate those efforts?
I feel like in those effort, in those instances, I know, I hear what you're saying, because I've heard a lot of those same concerns, I trust the professional construction folks that they know what they're doing best, and I believe, I understand what you're saying, but it's like, sometimes I don't want us to meddle too much, you know, and there's not enough of...
I don't think it's meddling, I think it's management.
I don't know that we need to manage PCI or...
Sitting up there on those last three blocks of 18th Street for these six or seven months of construction and go, why are these three blocks not happening with the same businesses? Because that's what we deal with, is three or four of the same construction companies. Why aren't you finishing this before you go down and dabble for two or three weeks? Because it's not meddling, Kelly, I think it's monitoring, and yet you see nothing happen, and so those citizens see nothing.
And I don't mean that to be disrespectful, Gil, I'm just saying that those same companies are all over the Cedar Valley, and they're, they are, they are suffering the workforce shortage as well, so I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but...
No, I don't take it as disrespectful, I don't take, give, make it that vibe to you.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, they are being concerned about, they're running their business, so they're going to take that 18th Street project, they're going to take the Main Street, the First Street, they're going to take all those projects and hope that they can get them all done with the resources they have, instead of going, all right, we will take the 18th Street project and we will complete it in three weeks, but I've got no assurance I'm going to get the Main Street project done that'll start a month later.
Well, and I think that kind of goes back to that communication piece, you know, a lot of what we are working on now, we have like, you know, little subsites for them with on the website, and it's like, what's the frequency at which those are able to be updated, and like, where's the best place to get information, and, you know, it's like, I'm not sure there's a completely streamlined process for how all of that works, so maybe that's something that we can explore, assuming, it's like, obviously this was a particularly terrible time, just because of all of the projects happening at once and delays that happened, but I think, you know, our responsibility can always be that communication piece, you know, we can always try our best to advocate for people, but, you know, it's like, sometimes the reality is it's just going to happen, which is a bummer, but I do think it is good to explore options, but most importantly, focus on just how we can communicate that information.
I agree.
Southdale 15 all the time.
I don't have...
One question, it seems like we go really late into the winter, cold season, ground's freezing and so on, to pour concrete and finish up, why don't we start ripping up earlier? You can rip out concrete first of, or it's March 15th, maybe.
So typically, we'll give them, when they can start, a start date, and they kind of choose with the weather, because, you know, you rip out that, you can rip out the concrete, but all of a sudden, if we get four weeks of rain, they're not doing anything anyway.
Well, you can get drought, rain, snow.
Absolutely, so they kind of choose, choose that, that window in the, in the beginning when they start, I touched on this a little bit earlier, but, you know, this was what I'll call a maximum capacity year, we're, we're out there, but they're still paving, and we're lucky right now because 50 degrees today that, that we're paving, so they were down paving at Searly Boulevard just today, they'll be doing tomorrow as well, so we're very fortunate that, that we're still able to pave into December, but yeah, we've got a lot of work, Main Street this year because of some of the, the things that we did and just the restaging, we were able to get a little bit more done, next year hopefully it won't be as bad, the other things that just caught up and bit us, and, and there was really no working with them was the DOT, it was, they decided, you know, we were like, okay, really, you're going to close 58, or 58 and 20, Hudson and 20, and then up here and, but that's when they had their dollars.
Being mostly facetious, just reiterating what you hear from residents, I couldn't even get down to the city hall.
But, but to Hannah's point, we can do a better job on, people are more tolerant if they know what's going on, you know, if somebody's, if somebody doesn't show up for three days, the, the resident thinks it's three weeks, but if you can tell them, look, here's what happened this week, you know, we did some underground, the contractor's not going to be there next week, they won't, they'll be there the following week, at least they, you know, they're not happy about it, but they understand a little bit more, so we can do a better job on that.
That might tie with the communications, I would say it might tie with communications piece, how can we, and then we'll have some big projects like Green Hill 58 coming up that will pose, depending on the model to choose, some significant traffic changes, so we can, I'll just take this general direction to just make sure as much as possible we're being, or we're thinking on what are the secondary and tertiary impacts of doing this construction here, how we're managing the timelines, communication.
We know you'll really have your figure out the pulse of that one.
Bested interest.
I was just going to reiterate, I think Chase had said something that made me at least take this perception, so correct me if I'm wrong, but there's not a whole lot of entities that can do these massive kind of construction projects, so we're already overtasking the few entities that can, I think we probably need to wrap our heads around, we're going to be paying a premium if we keep up the pace, when others come in and force our hand, it's a little more difficult, but to Ron's point, this was a banner year for construction projects.
Well, here late in the year, there was a, there was a Cedar Rapids contractor that came in because, because one of our contractors couldn't get to it, or one of our local contractors, so they did a whole bunch of paving in a subdivision for a private developer just because...
So hopefully, having gotten through this construction season, it won't be as bad, but we're going to be paying to get contractors here, no matter what the project.
So what's our, where are we at?
So I think we kind of got off of, got off of that, the way, what I see is we're on, on 2C, 4B and C, which is CFU related, support CFU in the implementation of water service programs, this obviously was another council initiated, didn't know if somebody had some comments on it, or...
I don't think that was one that I panicked on.
Probably just because it's a very big project.
Yeah, right.
And again, this is very much like a sewer fund or a refuse fund, you know, water is an enterprise fund, so the, the users will be, you know, paying for that, very similar to a number of years ago out in Cherrywood, Cherrywood wanted sanitary sewer, so there was a sanitary sewer tapping fee that went out, and the residents actually ended up paying for getting sanitary instead of being on septic services, and then a number of years after that, they went on water as well, so they were able to pay through that, so.
Trying to jog my memory, if this was one that I underscored, because I think obviously clean water is huge important for everybody worldwide, but doesn't even recall if that was theirs, or was this one?
Is this inclusive of stormwater management, discussing that?
I think this is really potable waters, the way I take it. Both B and C.
I think if I did it, I just wanted to support the importance of water, so let's keep doing that.
All right.
I think CFU's water charges are low compared to many communities.
They're, they're usually either, in the state of Iowa, they're either the lowest or one of the lowest, so, and actually, that's all of their utilities, they're either one or two, and I think they get pretty upset if they slip down to number three on something, Resilience Plan, this is one that, again, talking with all of the other plans tomorrow evening, so again, hope that's all right, and then...
Monday, 11.
Monday, I keep saying tomorrow, I apologize.
You can talk all you want.
I might, sit at home and just mumble this stuff.
So drive your Christmas lights out for KLA.
So moving on, alley management was one that was discussed, it was 2C, 5E, that was, and so we've got to put together a number of slides here that were just from previous presentations, so I'll run through those real quick, and if there's any additional questions or, or what have you, so the city currently has a total of 166 alleys, you can just see the breakdown of what their makeup is, six asphalt, 19 concrete, 120 are dirt or gravel, and 21 are permeable, I would say, so this is something that's probably been an interesting conversation over the years, because the city for a number of years just kind of went ahead and did minimal maintenance to the alleys, but it is, it is public infrastructure, so since about 2013, we've been going through and reconstructing a number of the alleys, so we've got 14 of them that are concrete, 21 that are permeable, this includes city projects and private developments. So just kind of a breakdown real quick about the gravel alleys with regard to the concrete alleys and what they'll cost, and so, you know, the gravel alleys have and continue to be maintenance issues, whether it's washouts or ruts, snow plowing, any of those type of things, the concrete alleys, if they're in good shape, they're, they're usually do well, we do get certain types, you get more runoff if you're just doing a concrete alley, and so the same as new asphalt, the one thing I'll tell you about, new asphalt doesn't seem to last as long, just because it starts to break up over time, especially from the edges, so move into permeable alleys, what we've started implementing since 2014 is looking at these permeable alleys, and we've been getting some grant monies to offset some of the costs, but it's really, at the time, back then, the council at the time was really looking at the water quality aspect of it, and because the Cedar River's in a paired body way, or the Dry Run Creek, I should say, well, Cedar River is too, but so we've moved to where, where possible, we've been moving towards these permeable alleys, and I want to skip ahead here just because, no, this is, this is the one, yeah, this is, this is our, there's, there's a big decision matrix really that engineering goes through before they determine what's going to be, whether it's a concrete alley or reconstructed as, as a permeable alley, and, and so, you know, the first part is really, should the alley be reconstructed, there's some criteria down there, and if so, should it be asphalt, concrete asphalt or permeable alley, so is the alley in a critical watershed, is there enough slope for drainage, is there immediate access to the storm sewer, and is there known flooding concerns, so.
Ron, I don't, I don't know the answer to this, that's why you ask questions, we are in locations of doing alley pickup, or I thought all of that was...
No, there, there are some locations that the garbage truck goes through that the alleys to pick up.
Is that an outdoor residential camp?
Residential.
It's got to be pretty few, is there, is there a reason that we haven't changed that the street pickup? It's a pretty unique situation.
Well, there could be some of those where you're set back a little bit further from the street, you have an alley, and then maybe you have 20 steps that go down to the street or...
It just explains my house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kids go down the street.
Yeah.
Make Gil do it.
Make Gil do it.
You're not getting alley pickup, Gil.
But in favor of no Gil, no alley pickup.
We're in conflict in this discussion, you have to excuse yourself.
All right, well, that was just a quick question, I guess.
But Gil, yours is, and, and I will kind of explain it a little bit differently, is, so your, your driveway is actually off the front, there's, there's folks that don't have driveway access off the front, so their driveway and everything is in the back, so it's much easier for the garbage can to go up back through the alley.
Some of those lanes where the garage is on the back, that's where.
Well, we won't sit and debate these, because there's three streets right down on Main that are all Main Street pickup that don't have driveways in the front of their house, because they're going to call me, because they're in my ward, they're going to call me tomorrow and go, Ron just described my house, does that mean they're going to do my alley pickup now?
No, I'm going to call Chase.
Is the goal though with this, that we have 165 alleys, and we've done 35, are we...
I think the goal is...
100%?
Well, I, I think the goal eventually is 100%, just because the, these alleys are a maintenance headache, and they are public infrastructure, and, and once you make the investment, the, the maintenance on them drops considerably over time.
I was going to ask, is there water treatment issues then? Because if we're allowing more of this to be permeably dealt with versus storm sewer, is there water treatment savings in the runoff and...
You're asking how much, like, it's not I and I, but I mean, how much does this help our water treatment by putting a permeable with a storage basin underneath, that's the preferred method because of the value adds, right?
Correct, I mean, that's part of the grant program, it's significant, you have to meet certain thresholds for the treatment process, so.
When you say treatment, what do you mean, treatment process?
I'll say, we filter it out in the rock chamber underneath.
Instead of going into the city storm sewer, and then into the Dry Run Creek.
Do we know what our actual cost is then, if we have those grants, it's $350 per...
Those are rough, and each year depends on if we, we are awarded a grant, so.
Is there any change in the direction, or continue to put in permeable when feasible?
I think when we go through the decision matrix here, it's really is, is this a good candidate for a permeable?
Yeah, I think Darrell, you had brought up, shouldn't we just pave them all?
Well, I'm more looking at alleys that are very flat, and if we put in permeable to capture the water, that would have drained off on the side into the grass and gone into the aquifer naturally. into the grass and gone into the aquifer naturally. Now we're capturing and bringing it down into a storm sewer and increasing the flow of the storm sewer.
And I think if you look in the, the decision matrix here, one of the questions is, is there enough slope for drainage? Is the alley in, in a critical watershed?
With the permeable, it's preventing it from going into the storm sewer. It's still dissipating into the aquifer.
Underneath that, there's a drain, a tile line that...
But it's a tile, no, it's a store. It's a local, it's a local matriculating basin underneath there. So it still trickles down into that local area instead of running off on the surface into the six storm drains.
But it still goes into storm drain after it's filtered in that subbase. And that subbase is gonna get clogged up after a while. How long before we have to clean out the subbase?
Yeah, that's pretty fast. Between the bricks, we'll have to back out the seven, it's one seventy between the brick chunks.
I like the current plan.
To turn it into the storm drains.
Well, I'm just looking at some places where we could have more asphalt done quicker, especially if it's flat and the water drains off into the backyards.
And I think those will be the ones that, like in this particular case, that are... So this is the proposed 2024 alley management. So we reconstruct the four, the three right there in, in concrete and two permeable. And then, fast forwarding to 2025, there's two in concrete and two permeable. And so, we try to balance not only the alley maintenance project, but with our regular street project as well. And we'll get to that a little bit later.
So are we getting the storm drain extensions up into the College Hill area? East and campus there where there are none?
So as we reconstruct streets, that's, it's, there's a plan?
Yep, I remember we did one a few years ago that the alley was, just a single alley, was 210,000, and that was a big concern for, for some individuals. Well, that was part of it. Large storm sewer pipe up the alley to serve the area that's been concerned for long.
And so, but it goes on to help more than just that alley. So it goes, it helps the whole area.
And what's the process for prioritizing which alleys get done?
So, kinda goes back to the, the whole, this whole decision matrix and, you know, what's the condition of the alley? What, are there known concerns? If there are, they obviously move up. Are there flooding issues? All of those type of things, so...
How about if there's really neighbors who are calling you and emailing you all the time?
So we have that, not only for that, but we have it for the local often sales tax because there's, there's folks that say, "Hey, when are you gonna redo my street?" Oh, probably got 20 streets that are worse than yours. You know, it's, it's always a, those are always tough decisions. And I think, I think our staff does a pretty good job going out, but, you know, eventually, we get there. And so Randy Lorenzen used to say, you know, "We're trying to get every last nickel out of that street that we can." One guy's told him, "I think you're there."
Are we, just since you asked that quick, are we pretty good with keeping up with where maintenance would be versus... In other words, are there some following of this repair that you would need more funding to get to faster? Are we pretty good on replacement rates?
I think the program sits pretty good. Years ago, we increased, you know, when we began the program, we were only going one or two alleys a year. And then it's gotten up to three, four alleys. And then we're funding like five or specific year. I think we're pretty good right now.
According to my emailing neighbors, they have, they were on the list and then they moved off the list. Is that a thing?
Pass the email on the chain.
So I'll use the local often sales tax, or street pavement management. There's, there's times where if all of a sudden we have a bad winter and you have a lot of frosty, you know, there could be a, a street that moves up and one has to move back.
Ron, Ron, can you go back, go on to the three of your slides? For example, we go to, we go to let this project and it's over budget by $100,000. We will eliminate one of them to get back with the budget. That one gets then pushed to the next year, and then something from that year has to be pushed. So it's always kind of a moving prover.
Great, great. So Ron...
Are we good with...
We need, you need to know about this one before you continue with this program?
Yes.
Gil? Thank you.
And just for note, Hannah, like North Cedar Heights neighborhood, the North Cedar Heights area, we had to move some of those around because of budgeting and contractors being able to do them and stuff. So yeah, we were told it was getting done this year, but now it's getting done next year. We're always working towards it.
That went from probably a, a three-year project to a five-year project.
Yeah. So you'll hear from those folks. Ron's right behind you, he'll let you know.
Snap out my front door yet.
Okay, where, where am I at? So I have a, so I have, I meant two C six resilience?
Next page.
Yeah. Alright, yes. Two C six. So our racial equity task force and racial equity and human rights objectives. So as you can see, one of the recommendations that came out of the racial equity task force was hiring the, the DEI specialists. That occurred last January. I think we've been, I think Jennifer and her staff made a really good choice with, with Chelsea. She's been doing some great work. She's been out in the community. One of the things that she does is, for instance, she looks at all of our job classifications or all of our personnel policies or any of those things, just to try to see, okay, is there any things in here that, that are alarming? And there's just, it, it's nice to have a fresh set of eyes on some of that stuff and look at, at what we have to do to move that stuff forward. But, so she's also been a active partner, liaison in one Cedar Valley. She's a DEI Cedar, Cedar Valley group. So just a number of, of these things. She's our liaison with the HRC. One of the things that, another one of the recommendations that came out of the racial equity task force is to come up with a recommendation for, to create an equity committee, Cedar Falls Equity Committee. And really, where we're at with that right now is, our recommendation is, is that we don't want to duplicate any of the efforts. So Chelsea's been working with, what am I, no T? She's been, the, it's kind of this, this last bullet point here. Recommend at this point to work with partners listed above instead of trying to create a Cedar Falls-only equity committee. So I think we're getting more bang for our buck with having her as a liaison to these other committees. We've also added, I forget which one it is now, but we've also added some of our police staff to start going to some of these things as well, so...
I love all that, as a person who sat on that committee. And I also love that last part where you just said that the police staff is going because that was a, you know, I think it was Craig, Paul Lee and myself who sat on the public, or the policing side of that task force. And I remember one of the main things that we talked about over and over again was, you know, not everybody works a nine-to-five, or not everybody's available during the day to go to things. Like, like our coffee with a cop, I think it's awesome. But not everybody's available to go to that because they work, you know? And, and so I think one of the things from that task force was making sure it's, you're going at different times of the day to different things. And maybe not just Cedar Falls things, but, you know, Cedar Valley things. And so, I love that.
And that's one thing that Mark Howard's been very good at is community policing. And that's all of those type of things that you mentioned.
So we need coffee with a cop in the morning and drink in the clink in the afternoon?
Well, I don't know that. But like, but for instance, I know that there's different things, you know, like there might be a thing going on at a, at a church somewhere that, you know, whatever. I think it's just, the more places you can be, community policing is great. And also, like when you talk about, I'm gonna ramble for a minute, but when you talk about, you know, maybe getting folks to come into a certain job, what a great, in my opinion, the more you can expose your profession to different, you know, to all the community, maybe, maybe there's a chance that those folks will come on board and be a team member.
Because there's the few pieces of this, I've worked with a lot of the economic inclusion diversity DEI groups. And one, I know there's a big political, national conversation. Having worked a lot with Chelsea and talked with a lot with her and with all these groups, I have had really good conversations with her because I think a lot of times people's perception is it's just fluffy stuff. Like, no, this is helping us access more people for applications, getting more people potentially applying for our jobs. So I've said, or seen that it's really good working. I would agree with this recommendation. There's, in the last couple of years especially, there's probably four or five different Cedar Valley-wide equity initiatives that all overlap a lot. And there's kind of a, big need came up, a bunch of people jumped into the fray, and now it's kind of going through the, okay, who's really addressing which needs? How do we figure that out? So I'd say I really strongly support this recommendation that let's stay in the conversations but figure out where is the right place for us to be able to play a role in that.
So Kelly, you had sat on the committee and talked with Paul at length about this too. He was, one of the recommendations directly from it was that idea of creating that separate Cedar Falls Equity Committee. The recommendation here is to utilize these existing relationships to perform that function without creating a separate committee. I would say that means an edit to E. I just want to make sure we're, we're okay with D.
This is just...
Did that accomplish the aims of the task force ask, Kelly? It was a six E.
I think, or determine best approach to...
Right, which is...
I'd like, I'd like to, to leave it for now and just, because we may be back here next year saying, you know what, this wasn't as fruitful as we thought, and so...
Still up and coming.
Yeah. So, I mean, again, this, this position and, and what it's capable of doing and the things that are going on is really in its infancy. I mean, she's, she hit the ground running, but there's, there's a lot to do. So if everybody's good with that, we'll go to, have a couple here that are in number seven, which is G, two C, seven A, which is continue support for mayor's updates to inform city council, Cedar Falls residents and stakeholders of status of city council priorities, city council projects, upcoming activities and key information.
Is that mayor's updates a technical thing, or is there...
Yeah, what is that?
Oh, he's sent an email every once in a while, so like, and I mean, that is respectful. I just mean, let's have lots of communication. But I think we should keep that in.
Yep.
Podcast.
It could be collaborative, it could be collaborative learning along with what's our best communication strategy.
It's probably a podcast.
Oh, wow, boy.
I would love to see the mayor, um...
I talked to the man, it sounds like we're gonna be co-hosting a podcast, Ron.
Yeah.
You and Amanda.
You ready for this?
Not joking.
I am now, I guess.
Not joking, I feel like, didn't we, I feel like, I don't know, and again, I don't have access to Channel 15 right now, but...
But there were more.
But, but I feel like at one time, the mayor was active in being on a segment of Channel 15. I love that.
So mayors in the past have had what they call the mayor's corner?
Yes.
And that, so, you know, I'm an advocate of, of even taking some of the things that, this is me, so not the political person, but taking some of the things out of the business of a council meeting. For instance, a, a, not resolutions, proclamations. Taking a proclamation, be able to sit down with the person side by side. Mayor can issue his proclamation during the mayor's corner and then actually have a good conversation about, okay, what does this mean to your organization or what have you?
And so I have actually talked to the man, that's something I'd like to do is, probably a twice-a-month podcast where we release, and I talked to Danny, he said we could do this and their studio actually record, play it on Channel 15. It'll also have the audio as a, on a podcast channel.
I love that.
We're just interviewing whoever's relevant to something that's coming up on council.
But I think you should call it more crazy.
I have a Saturday night's live sketch going through my...
And then we talked about generating revenue. This is where it's gonna come in.
Yeah.
Merch endorsements.
Yes.
And today, we're having Coca-Cola.
Wow, going all the way to Coca-Cola.
Oh dear.
I'm so glad you jumped to a international sponsor as your first sponsor.
And then I would say the, the other item that was again in green, hold city council committees or work sessions on council meeting Mondays to discuss complex or potentially contentious matters. That just seems like normal practice.
I think the thought there, though, is like, we haven't done, I feel like, at least in my, since 2020, we could have a this, a healthier maybe discussion and debate, and it's an open meeting, yet I feel like it's a little more, instead of sitting up when we're about to vote and discussing something, like, right? I feel like it'll be better to hash it out in this place.
Yeah, do we need to agree to changing the format?
Actually, because I looked at the technical meeting structures and we don't really have to change anything because there's a listed work session model where it's, it's recorded, minutes, all that. So we really don't need to change anything.
And we can on the fly. If we choose in February to take a look at that policy, yeah, that's a single one vote. One done. So we could hold a work session on changing the policy. Yeah, get it done.
Great, love it.
So we're at the end of Goal Two. Anything from Goal Two? Anything that you have not had a chance to name or ask about?
So we're doing the strategic planning Monday. That's a whole other topic that I feel passionately about.
And we said we're gonna talk about resilience at some point already? Yeah, strategic plan, resilience, you plan all of the plans.
Comp plan, anything zoning-wise, so...
The EMS 911 focus, obviously, is something we need to talk about, how we can strong-arm Cedar Falls.
I think we have that coming up at Goal Three here.
Okay. It was just listed at a Goal Two on this one as well, so there's a lot that overlap. I, I wanted to note a housekeeping item I am gonna be having to head out, but...
So nothing else for two then?
We can get through...
I mean, just the consideration, and this will probably, we don't need to talk about this tonight. Whoever put the consideration of public comments at the end of the meeting, I can just review our overall meeting structure, how we're meaning to include that in there. Did anyone bring that up for a particular reason, or does everyone agree that that's something we want to look at? Is just having...
I've talked about that several years now, and we thought, having it in the front, some people can comment and then go home instead of waiting two hours, three hours, four hours.
There's been plenty of rationale back and forth over the last seven, eight years.
Our meetings are not gonna be that long?
If you want to look at the history on it, welcome to go for it. I would just say, if we were gonna change anything, we should keep it at both, but that was gone away for a foray reason, so I didn't make any of those changes, so.
Okay.
I'd, I'd just look at the language of what, you know, on what we consider city relevance, you know?
Yeah, were you here when the lady said the smoke trails in the sky by the jets? She was wondering.
Stan, I were, they did that.
It was in my mind, what was to say?
It's in the cities.
I didn't say it. I was reading your mind.
Danny? The, I, I put the, how can we, the city work continuously to support you and I, buildings? I guess, I think we've already got that several places of supporting University of Northern Iowa, but I don't think that that needs to be necessarily like, I'm not, I don't want a work session or anything at this time. I just want you to know that that's of importance, I think. And we've already said that several places.
Dustin, anything with Goal Three that...
Do we have a forum if we, if we stay, or we got Goal Three to Monday?
It's still a legal meeting.
Kevin?
Carry on.
Yeah, let's carry on.
So, um, I do want to just do a quick check.
You can listen to the recording and get it all.
Do you need to do a quick break?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll do a quick bathroom break.
Yes.
Let's just get her done.
I need to drink water.
Dustin, was there any like new items that you had in that?
Me, tech tip. On two, that's new.
Was any of the big stuff, we'll have?
Yeah, we're gonna have another opportunity too, I just don't want to waste it.
See you later.
Alright, what's over here?
Have a good night.
Cookies, did you get cookies? Did you get Nutter Butters? Nutter Butters? Which ones? I was gonna have Funyuns, but then Chris, I was watching those.
I wanted the, um...
I felt, I felt the, I felt the look over here when I was...
I shared my Funyun story and I kept waiting, like my discipline, I'm like, okay, wait. If they're there at the end, you can have them. Then I find his hand, reach over.
Then I crushed it.
Like, he's going for the Funyuns.
I wanted the Fritos.
Were they plain Fritos?
No, they were the twisty barbecue.
Those are good.
Oh, they're someone back, I think.
I, that's what I figured.
You know, I was into your apples last night, so I just...
You know, I was into your apples last night, so I was just a person.
That, that one too.
Yeah.
It's very sweet.
I saw a lot of it, so, you know, and, uh, yeah. Every bottom, every, every girl. Basically, I saw what happened. She was lying. And she just-
Yeah.
Yeah. She was blocking.
Yeah.
Yeah. She's got a block.
Yeah, something's not right. Something's not right. I don't hear a lot of vote out for her.
Yeah, he, he does. I did find pretty funny. Go for it, I'll back Pete up here tonight. Oh, you wanna say, I, I am back here, I'm just gonna-
No, I know, I told you, I got, I got your cookie. But I did-
That's my first one. I never got one.
Because my brother works at Pickle Girls and he'll bring them around. But he's a lovely person. But he's a lovely person. It's like a butter. Yummy, by the way. Thank you, I gotta track down another one of those. They're over there somewhere.
These are amazing.
Good, they're playing your old, it's fresh, it's back on.
Wow.
I love brown sugar.
Jen's.
Yeah, there we go, I was like trying to figure out how he's gonna get around one. Yummy. Yeah, they're good, yeah.
Butter and brown sugar.
Oh, wow. I don't touch, he takes the meat, yesterday they poured the ham into the Easter and I'm gonna find a Scotch and red recipe, please, come on, y'all, come on.
Not that off.
Now that I know it's not what I thought it was.
Well, some people make them with corn syrup, but I don't.
Oh, that's on here.
It's a tick scale.
I had too many of them.
You're getting your old grains, there is no such thing.
Kelly, good cookies.
Thank you. So Jen, you're a baker?
Do you have any?
Me, the baker, is that what you said? You said you're a baker?
Yeah.
So, I think you do, okay? I had a Scotch and red.
Okay. Cheese stick, yep. What?
You had a red. What's a Scotch and red?
I told us too.
We haven't talked for months.
I wonder if it's worth being-
We've seen our conversation time, but she's sleeping.
Hey, Danny, I found a bag for you.
You found a bag?
I did.
So then I said, I said, Chris, yeah, I'm like, what do you think of Scotch and red?
Yeah. My sister-in-law and my brother-in-law in Iowa are in the same class. Through them is how I met Dan, she's a couple of years behind us in school. But now we're all that age, my sister-in-law's got diagnosed with breast cancer.
I know exactly what the word is.
A year ago.
My sister makes them.
Went in together, physical, so she had a mass estimate.
Hey, you know, those are called stuff.
And then surgery. Human eye, your thyroid and your heart valve, you have a broken heart valve.
It's rice, rice and peanut butter cereal.
And one other. So now over the past year, she's had open heart surgery.
My husband knows that my biggest pain is when you go somewhere and it's like-
Thyroid surgery, one other one, now today she's got that.
It's Scotch and red, it's rice, rice and peanut butter cereal. That is not Scotch.
She's doing great, going, Diane just sent a note, she's done to get discharged, did the surgery with that.
Well, yeah, I would agree.
For my niece.
I shuffled, I saw, I saw-
Graduated from Dallas, up in, in Whitewater.
So I was like-
For you and me.
Oh my God, cause you took a milkshake.
And did a ton of-
There's eight of those cookies.
Twenty-two-year-old girl.
Yeah.
My niece, all of a sudden.
You were allergic to eggs, you gotta tell people that.
She's doing well. I mean, it's system, it's like, okay, what are the odds? They actually, the physicians reported it to the CDC.
But I'm just, cause I packed them for like a-
Long time since I practiced.
I ended up taking, I ended up taking two Benadryl, I'm like, this is so scary.
He went, we were talking about, I was gonna talk about my oldest son AJ.
Oh, good, yeah.
So he knows my oldest son AJ.
Yeah, we would've graduated together.
He had a particular cancer.
They had AJ?
Seven years ago. Had a year, had, had surgery, had the AFC radiation. Four other kids from his class, well, multiple died. Four other kids from St. Patrick's. One was a Conley kid. Ended up with brain cancer. Uh, one was Jer, uh, Jeremy Swan.
Sir, you miss?
Yes.
He's turning forty, sir. We should start him.
Cookies probably don't have as much-
Yeah, AJ turned thirty, AJ turned thirty-nine in November, twenty-
He has like four or five.
Thirty-nine in October.
Yep.
The other thing I noticed is-
All right, me too.
Yeah, me too.
I turned fifty-five in December twenty-fourth.
Get away from that, that's Daryl. Hear you, hear you, hear you.
Something that's an age bracket.
Hear you.
I think I'm gonna take a piss in there.
Is this banana poison? Come on, I saw something over here, gotta get this.
All right, folks, we're on the home stretch, goal three, I think, I think this will actually go relatively quickly, but, uh-
Famous last words.
Famous last words.
There's probably answers there.
So again, starting off with goal three, um, uh, 3A2 and 3B6 are kind of a couple of things, I'll read here, ensure that community health, safety and welfare are protected through provision of essential, cost-effective, efficient, professional and timely public services.
I may have checked that one, and I guess, I'm not insinuated at all that they're not, I just, I think it's in the, uh, the conversation of what's provided to folks, especially in the state of Iowa, I just think it's good to be aware that like, that's a problem for a lot of communities and counties, so I just think it's good to underline and underscore that one, that we hope we can continue to provide great services and evaluate, which I know we do, um, so if I, if I brought that one up, that's why. I bet Dustin might've brought it up too.
I think he did, yeah.
So I think just continue with that one in there?
Yep.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yep.
Okay, um, so, uh, six, which is your next yellow one on there, is adopted capital improvements program annually which coordinates major capital expenditures and is responsive to property tax levies and city's debt restriction. I think we covered this, uh, the other night, but it was on the list, so we wanted to make sure we just have the proposed timeline here, and is there any concerns with the timeline or anything moving forward? If you look at eight there, um, right below it, and that's, we're proposing that that gets removed, because it's actually taken care of in the financial policies, it was kind of repetitive, so. I'll move down to, uh, where do we camp here? 3B1, 3 and 5 are really ones that, uh, that were previously covered, which is continue to monitor the city's capacity, to provide adequate maintenance of its growing infrastructure, uh, continue to dedicate TIP releases, TIP release dollars, and then continue the annual street repair program using road use tax and local up and sales tax. And I think we previously covered that, so we'll move here. Uh, and this was just, here's our annual pavement management program for the next two years, this is 2024. Again, this is the area, um, that, that we're doing a lot of work in, we're proposing that Ridgewood Drive and Timber Drive are under construction next year, uh, I think it's, um, again, you know, this is a challenging area just because of some of the infrastructure, you have twenty-foot wide right of way and, you know, fifteen-foot deep sewer, when the sewer's in the right of way, sometimes it's under houses, I mean, it literally is, but it's, it's what you get when you go into an area that's got hundred-year-old infrastructure, so I think we're going in there, it's gonna be, um, it's gonna be a really good project when it's, uh, completed. Uh, and then here's some of our planned restoration, um, as we move forward for, oop, I, so, these particular, uh, streets, and then I'll just move forward, again, going back with the, uh, reconstruction and, um, in this area, and then this is 2025, so if anybody had questions or regards to those, those will come to you, what do you think, Chase, early, late winter, early spring for?
Can you act, let me on the Green Hill Road, part of this, though, as I'm looking at-
Where are we at, which?
Uh, bottom, Green Hill Hudson, Ashworth.
Green, Green Hill?
Green Hill doesn't-
Yeah, be where the, sort of the, what I call hospital site there, by that Casey's, it'd be a Sancile overlay, similar to what we did towards-
That, that last cut in there is Ashworth, is it, or?
No.
Yeah, so one of those, one of those, it's Algonquin and Ashworth that come, that come through there, so.
Algonquin's by Casey's and Ashworth was the one down.
Ashworth does it there, okay, thanks, that answered my question. And then on the Lone Tree Road Restoration, do they grind off the top surface?
Yeah, normally, depends on the situation, if it's an existing concrete street, a lot of times they'll just asphalt overlay on top of existing concrete street into the curb and gutter. Um, if it's an existing asphalt street that we really can't build up elevation, we'll mill it off.
Well, that section's in front, in the-
Yeah, oh, Eagles, yeah.
Yeah, so there isn't a curb and gutter.
Yep, we'll probably mill it off when we-
Does, will it go to the bike trail or will they maintain that?
We're looking at that bike trail there too, because it's right directly to Casey's.
Okay.
Do we have any, just with all the additional traffic on 12th Street this year, should we look at, I'm guessing you guys do.
But do we accelerate when that road's gonna be constructed then? There's a, uh, three-block or so stretch that's in really bad shape, and we knew it was in really bad shape before Main Street started, and we'll be, um, working on that as soon as we get Main Street done, section here on Gil's place there.
I checked, I was, I'm looking for the answer.
I was looking out here, we don't wanna show any favors of Gil's-
No, we don't, I, I have neighbors there too, I can, I got drunk.
So any, any, I need to say that's good work on Corone coming up. So any, any questions on 2025 then? We talked a little bit about 2024, this, this is what the plan is, but again, if all of a sudden this year we have a, a street that maybe really deteriorates over the winter, it may move up into 2025, so.
So just for, okay, planned reconstruction, we know that the section of, of Main from ninth to eighteenth.
Yeah, so-
You just don't put it on here or?
This is what we call our annual pavement program, it's what, our more local streets, residential streets, larger projects have their own separate CIP item, 27th Street, 23rd Street will have its own item, Main Street has its own item.
Okay.
Uh, where are we at now? We are at, um, so, yeah, let me get, go to B6, which is ensure that essential services, public safety, parks, sewers, roads, refuse collection are offered while consistently exploring ways to increase efficiencies in delivery.
I don't think we should look at increasing efficiency.
No.
It typically causes controversy.
Put the record show on the audio that that was sarcasm.
Who wrote that? Who wrote that?
I don't know.
What were they thinking?
Maybe Gil, or, sorry, maybe Dustin.
Well, and remember-
In any of these, we could've all been quite confused by this point too, so.
Remember the question was, what, what are priorities for you?
Yeah.
So it may just be that you were like, this is a priority, but not necessarily a change.
Keep doing that, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'll move on to seven, encourage civic involvement and volunteerism by Cedar Falls, you know, so here's just some of the things that we, um, we added this slide, not really knowing what, what maybe they wanna talk about, but our recycling, um, and I'm gonna get to, to our, our transfer station, um, I can't remem, I can't remember, that's tonight yet or tomorrow night, but, and then we have, um-
On Monday.
On Monday, yeah.
Ron's gonna be sitting here tomorrow night wondering where to go.
Where's everybody? You can have the gavel for tomorrow.
Just remember, you have to start with hear you, hear you.
Hear you.
Then we'll leave the bad chips for you too.
I wonder if this could also fall under a Danny responsibility of just like, you know, kind of looking at ways, connecting with these various groups and then like looking at ways to help them, you know, be more approachable or how to get people to know about them better, whatever it is, you know, because I think we've, you know, talked about that there's a decline in volunteerism and that's-
I agree, and also, there's another thing that I would like to be, I feel like the way to encourage volunteerism is to be a volunteer yourself, so as much as like, we could add that to the calendar of what's going on in Cedar Falls, if there's an opportunity, I'd love to know about that. Because some of the best ways that I've connected, uh, when you do the waste, uh, the hazardous waste stuff, I get to spend a whole morning with many of our Public Works folks, which I very much appreciate, um, so anyway.
So two quick things, um, I have lunch, or coffee next week with Born Fink, head of Cedar Valley Volunteer Center.
Okay.
Cause I've worked there before, she reached out, just wanting to high level talk about volunteer, and they have a few things coming up, and they just got some grant funding to look at doing, kind of a volunteer training engagement thing, a pretty big funding, I don't know much about it, she just said they had that, let's talk about it, so gonna talk with her, and then also I did, um, and maybe ask staff, you guys can correct me on this, but I asked Rob, Mayor Green, um, cause he sent me the link for the Pack the Dome for Martin Luther King Day, and I asked, you know, do we do any staff-wide or encouraging staff-wide days of volunteering, and he said, not really, other than one, I think Earth Day, we do some cleanup of the park or something.
And then some of us did do the Udo.
Okay, so we did do, okay, so that's something I would like to look at though, partly as a staffing thing and just encouraging that act of volunteerism, but looking at other other ways, Habitat for Humanity builds and things that we can-
Maybe we can add to that and discuss VTO.
To the staffing, yep.
The, the Earth Day or Earth Week that we've kind of evolved into has really, um, been a great program, cause it gets, uh, it's that time of year when the snow's gone and now all of a sudden you're encouraging all of the businesses to get out there and clean up their own areas and get some of that, and, uh, we've seen a tremendous, you know, effort from all kinds of different businesses, and they'll take a, a day, or we have, um, other businesses that'll say, hey, you know, we got five volunteers, we wanna go do a street or something, so, so it's, it's worked out very well.
Or Cedar Neighborhood Association, to find example of Earth Day and working on all the projects along Center Street, Hope Savannah.
Is there a calorie day or weekend?
Yep.
And two, I'll look at, I'll throw out ideas, you like, it'd be nice if we could get council together, we talked about team building, maybe do a Habitat build with those and Kevin to referee us.
Yes.
We're doing a Habitat build again.
I'm glad to hear it.
If you're hanging drywall, you don't have time to like, sit there and talk about councils.
All of the staff, this one, these staffs out of the staff access, I think that would-
Yeah, I'll take on some of them unless there's any specific things, anybody?
Well, um, the recycle part, and Justin brought it up, and I thought we were gonna
program because it gets, uh, it's that time of year when the snow is gone. And now all of a sudden you're encouraging all of the businesses to get out there and clean up their own areas and get some of that. And, uh, we've seen a tremendous, you know, effort from all kinds of different businesses. And they'll take a, a day or we have, um, other businesses that'll say, hey, you know, we got five volunteers and we want to go do a street or something. So, so it's, it's worked out very well.
Or Cedar Neighborhood Association is a fine example of Earth Day and working on all the projects along Center Street, Hope Savannah.
Is there a Calhoun Day or weekend?
Yep.
And two, I'll throw out ideas you like, it'd be nice if we could get council together and we talked about team building, maybe do a habitat build with those and Kevin De Refereus.
Hello, what's?
We're doing a habitat build again.
I'm glad to hear it.
If you're hanging drywall, you don't have time to like sit there and talk about.
All the staff, this one, yes, staffs added.
Yeah. I'll take on some of them unless there's any specific things, anybody?
So. The recycle part, and Justin brought it up. I thought we were going to talk about it at that time. But I'd like to see us do a better job of managing a home rule on a poorly run state program of our can and bottle deposit law. You know, it's just, when you come to the recycling centers and the bottles or the glasses full of returnable bottles and the cans, why can't we go back to when we did work for the Boy Scouts and the Lions Club and the others that we at least collected those at our, I know it's more work to separate out and collect those, but if we're not going to address this from a state level, maybe we can at least not just add to the, to the, to the waste stream of either just throwing them away or, or at least trying to recycle them. But someone's getting that nickel.
I guess what I'm confused because if you're recycling them, you're recycling them. Who's not recycling? I guess.
It's the waste of the money.
The nickel is just going. When you buy your.
No, I, I understand that, but it's, it's your money, right? I mean, I'm not, I'm not taking away from it, but.
But it could be useful money to.
Oh, yeah.
To fund programs.
Wonderful things.
So council members once a week could go dig through the trash. Dumpster.
I guess that's what I, I love that. And I agree with you, but, but that takes work to do.
Whatever it is for volunteer group that says, you know, hey, would you be willing to count a container for if people would, if maybe there's some trash that's going to end up in it?
This is where I come with the volunteers. Again, as a person who volunteers a lot, I see the same folks volunteering everywhere. So I, I'm all for that, but, and it's okay. I think as a council to, to say, encourage that, but at some point people get tired, you know, because again, and I'm not being disrespectful. I love that. But at some point when it's the same people, if you look at your church, your wherever it's the same folks over and over and over again, and at some point they, they get tired, you know? But I, I agree.
Or they're going to get thousands of dollars in cans.
If they have the time to do that. Yeah.
Yeah.
They bring it to the redemption centers that are overflowing.
Well, like there's other avenues and just one over one redemption center.
Cause are you, or is that conversation extending into like talking about city recycling as a service and wanting to do more there? Or are you just talking about?
That too. City recycling as a service.
Which I'm sure has been talked about.
From the times in the past, but we used to have the cardboard box that was a transfer station for getting nickels. Is that for city? We got there.
I was just telling them actually there was a drop off and they didn't get funded the Rex Scholarship Fund, but then Metro Redemption stopped picking it up. So, so now it's going to be our cost to do these things.
Get another group to take it. Put a tug in there.
So we take like 10 cans on the pop can balls and everything through our normal just drop off stations. They have like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ten, but not nickel.
Not, not top cans.
And just smashed or.
Yeah. So we don't take any of that or anything else.
The Boy Scouts have the recycling over at the president's Cedar Heights Presbyterian. You want to take your cans there once a month. They're over there.
So does the community society.
People drive it, it's that little church.
And like Pheasants Forever or something up in Waverly. Like there are places to take them. Chris Dunn, more hip to that.
So are we adding something with this or is this just a note to keep in mind at this?
Note to keep in mind.
Okay. Thank you.
Just wanted to add another thing to Danny's plate. So.
It is quite littering my job.
Yeah. So kind of like on what Gil was saying, like North Cedar has this really active neighborhood association. I think, you know, uh, Mayor Green had mentioned doing it at one point, but trying to get the presidents of the neighborhood associations together to try to facilitate some sort of, you know, whether that's information exchange or, you know, just wanting to collaborate together on something, whatever, but creating kind of a coalition of neighborhood associations. And I think that could be a potentially really good resource for us because then, you know, we can hear what they're doing and do a better job of connecting with those folks.
Thought you were there. Do we have any, or have we ever had any formal like neighborhood outreach, neighborhood association outreach, interaction?
We have interacted with the neighborhoods that we know are kind of active. So, um, until a couple of years ago, we didn't regularly tend North Cedar, for example, but now we always send a planner always goes, police is usually there.
Which does help a lot.
Yes. Just for, yes, for that liaison. Um, and between Main Street, we've sent somebody to and Collegeville Partnership, somebody goes to. So those are the ones that we kind of service because they're really established groups that, that have requested that and seem to enjoy and benefit from it. And there are others. I mean, we're willing to talk about that. You know, there was a new one for a while that had started up, but it didn't, you know, we attended a couple of times, different staff did, but it wasn't really established and it's kind of on by the wayside.
Well, I think it was one of mine, right by the public safety building.
It used to be.
Yeah. And they pushed to get the roundabout, I think, at Green Hill and South Main. But then, well, I think it was Penny Pop or Penny.
Yeah. I think she was pushing a different way.
Yep.
Well, and I wonder, you know, are there resources that those groups have because there are, they are established, you know, like understanding when it makes sense for you to set up a nonprofit and, you know, how do you, whatever, whatever it is, you know, it's like, I think for some of those groups, it's because they, they are so established, they kind of have to have those things. But you know, if there's just information that we can provide neighborhoods with, and I think in particular then when we move to, you know, doing surveys of different neighborhoods or, you know, like when, when the school leaves and Sartori leaves, you know, then we have access to potentially a mailing list or whatever it is so that we can, you know, get more people involved. So I think it would just be a really good resource for us to have. And that sounds like a great job for Danny.
I think there's some, there's some of those, um, next door is one of the.
Yeah.
So there's, there's social media aspects that we can follow up on as well. So if we're good with, uh, number seven, number eight is maintain the appropriate number of alternative staff in police and fire while improving services and reducing overtime costs. So, um, I think what we have here really is just kind of our staffing sheet with, um, it's a little bit blurry. Um, so, uh, but as you can see, there's first, second, third shifts in how they're staffed. Um, we have the investigative unit down here. Uh, also police reserves that we call on. Um, those might be police reserves that are typically a police reserve that they're a citizen that they've come in, or they could be a cross-trained, Cedar Falls employee, like for instance, Dan Jaeger from, um, uh, I T is, is one of ours that he does, uh, does a number of hours each month with regard to the police services. And then we have our three different shifts. They go by blue, green, red shift. Um, and this is our staffing for, um, uh, for fire. And so right now you can kind of see right down here, it's not really clear. So I apologize for that, but, um, these are folks that are unassigned. So either they're down at the academy, the I L E A command academy, or they're, um, in their field training officer, um, uh, right now and haven't been assigned to a shift yet, just because they're done. And then if you look right here, we have three that are vacant that we just, um, it, um, went through the process of certifying the list. When was that? And two weeks ago, I think it was. Um, so they're making offers and trying to get, um, folks established and, and when they can come on board. So, so I think right now, um, with the potential of adding the, the, what I would say, um, there's 75 sworn officer positions. And if we look at that, uh, resource officer, that would be a 76th position that would be, um, included in here. So is that, anything to add Craig?
Uh, nope. I would just say, yeah, that bottom rank column too, I mean, Ron's at a rank, those are people that are in training, you know, from the time you bring somebody on, it's about 10 months before you can really count them. And then, or so it takes quite a while. That's why you end up with people in the training pipeline for a while. And those three vacancies around pointed out have all occurred in the last probably 30, 45 days. So we've got offer letters out and hired for those.
And we already know there's another vacancy coming up just because of retirement.
I was gonna say, how, how, how often are you really full staffed? Truly full staffed?
You know, we would probably normally operate if this, if there be 75 sworn officers on there, there's always probably going to be two to four names in that bottom right column.
Sure.
And that would be any, any police department or any fire department.
Sure.
Any police department anywhere, fire department, you can train a little bit because the fire training is just five weeks. But the police, it just, the academy takes a long time and field training takes a long time.
Any other questions with regard to public safety staffing?
What's the number for the actual, like we have full staff, everyone there? And I know we've always got the two to four fluctuating natural attrition, but how much would that total sworn in number?
Well, the total sworn is 75. That's what we're budgeted for. And that's why when we do this sheet, I actually put the word vacant on it because that's representing body.
Right there. Yeah.
So there's, there's 75 names on there, but you can't count that list of reserves.
But these reserves are valuable when, when it comes to, uh, whether it's Sturgis Falls or, you know, a lot of the Saturday, uh, things in the downtown area, or even late nights on a Thursday, Friday or Saturday nights that, uh, that they take up some, some valuable time and position. So.
Well, some of the things Kelly mentioned earlier, the, that reserve corps is great for being at some of those church events and community events and things, along with , uh, regular officers. But if you get a reserve, they're at least they're committed to it. They can stay at the event where the regular officers, you can overcome on that.
Any other questions regarding, uh, items eight? So we'll move on to item nine, which is, um, Blackhawk County Consolidated Dispatch. So, as we know, uh, the Consolidated Dispatch has been around since 95. Um, we've really been, um, had a number of different funding sources over the years. So, um, the funding formulas have been changed over the years from, Craig can go into the history if, if you want, but really here just, uh, last year, the mayors, um, changed the funding formula. And really what, what the intent was, is I think everybody was moving towards, uh, changing the funding formula and having the, um, Blackhawk County supervisors take it in their levy. Well, what happened is they did part of that, changed the formula, which in cross, in, which in turn created a significant cost increase for the city of Cedar Falls. And again, you can kind of see that here. This change increased our cost from 600,000 to 1.1 million. And, um, so we use approximately 20% but pay for about 30%, 36% of it. Um, we have, one of the handouts that we have in front of you is, looks like this here. And it is actually, um, uh, what they just here recently did, uh, a few, what was it? Few days ago, Craig? So in increasing.
Last week. Yeah.
Increasing our cost again from the 1.1 million. So now we're up to about 1.25 million is what our, our cost is, which is another 6.17%.
I think one thing worth mentioning, part of the reason the costs are, are going up now too, is, uh, two years ago, they decided to bring in a consultant and take a look at the dispatch center. And one of the summaries was, they said, you're a medium sized dispatch center, but you're operating with the personnel of a small dispatch center. They basically said you need to double your staff. And so they're marching out doing that. So, uh, they added a position and a half in FY 24. And this budget right here ahead of you, they're adding five more full-time positions. And so that's part of this, you know, our big increase. So.
So this is going to continue to be a challenging, um, budget issue. Hopefully, um, we can get some movement and, and, well, there's a couple of different things. One is at some point this body's got to continue to think, okay, if we continue to increase our costs, are there other ways to do that? Um, I would tell you, I don't think that, um, trying to do dispatch on our own would be cost effective, but there are other methods where you don't have to be at this dispatch center. You could be a dispatch center for, for instance, the, the state patrol is dispatched from one spot throughout the state. So, you know, do we look at combining with a different dispatch center where it could be a fraction of this cost?
Would we still be on the hook for this cost either way though?
So that's, that's what gets interesting is because no, not right now we wouldn't. But if they go to a, but if then they switched and said, oh, well, now the rest of us are going to have to absorb Cedar Falls as 1.25. Now we take it back into the county, then, then our citizens would be paying twice. So it's kind of a chicken or the egg thing here.
And then you'd leave the other dispatch that we went to.
That's what you would have to do, but there would probably be some time period that you'd be in it, that, that you'd sign the contract.
Early termination.
So.
But there would possibly be a timeline between going from this model to a county model too. Yeah. We don't want to get stuck with what we're paying. We're having citizens pay a county fee and then a city as well.
And this is a tough, like Rob said, it's a tough topic. Another thing is we still have some debt from the towers that we stood low on for several years. We actually physically own our radios, which costs us about four, five thousand per radio. Um, but you know, you'd have to have command councils. Also the money that comes in through the phone lines through the 911 search charge goes to one dispatch center per county and that would always go to the county. So if you go off an arrow and you're also in some of those revenue sources that help the 911, those aren't there. So a lot of technology costs too. So it's a, it's a challenge. It's a tough one that we're going to, and Danny will, I mean, at every EMA oversight meeting every month, Danny will be talking about it because that's a big, that's a big thing.
Now we'll be on those meetings.
I love that.
What's the, Rob wants the Sartori share at the bottom.
Thank you.
And that's it.
I love that.
Sartori share.
Plus the Sartori share.
Yeah. Sartori pays Cedar Falls for the, they're part of the ambulance dispatch. And it's a certain amount that's always on there.
Yep. It's a 131,000.
Thank you.
So I don't know if there's anything to do, but just kind of keep following up and working with the mayor logic to, to try to.
The leverage we have though.
Hmm?
I'm assuming it's a pass. There's no leverage, is there?
Well, the, the leverage really is, are we going to leave the system or not? If you leave the system, then, you know, I, obviously they can come, but it would at least force their hand one way or another.
And what would push them to the county?
Push them to the county.
Probably the system.
And then we'd probably be back on the system, but there may be a short-term expense for a long-term gain.
Yeah.
It's a mix of leverage and relationships and working with those other mayors to, because it, just from an overall standpoint, it seems like the county levy just makes the most sense in the long run. Or, so it's just working to.
And it would be based on service calls.
And I think from.
It'd still have to go through that because I'm not sure exactly how it works, but I know, I'm pretty sure the, talking with the county high level, it was more so based on.
So right now it's based on valuations. And so it used to have the service call, but it's a hundred percent valuations now.
Makes no sense.
So.
It's an enterprise fund. Pay for service.
Craig, is there ways to stay in this, but work with the other cities on some strategies on how we utilize this system?
That would really probably be more through the mayor's EMA oversight. Uh, one thing I was going to mention there, one thing we are going to do is as we talk about this joint evidence processing facility with county, uh, we've got a seat at the table there and we're going to stay active and engaged in that. Really with the goal being if that evidence processing is a good idea, let's wrap it all up in one big EMA.
Into this as well.
Evidence processing, dispatch, put it all together. And there are some economies of that that do make sense. Um, so we will have a seat at the table and really that's our, we're going to put a lot of effort in hoping that might help steer it towards an EMA levy and, and holding the dispatch every day.
It's a great idea.
It's brilliant. Florida and Cedar Falls are the big girls in the room. I think Waterloo and Cedar Falls are the big girls in the room.
And there's one big winner and one big loser.
Little pebbles basically around the edges. And they just sit there and watch us.
Although I think, is it, is it just a majority vote?
Yeah.
It's a majority vote.
So every mayor has the same weight?
There's some other cities in there that their dollar amounts aren't that big that they almost had to double. So, you know, they're feeling it worse than we are, but the dollar mark's on the big.
Yeah. Cause it's not based on like the mayor, one city doesn't have more weight in the voting than the other. So it's not on the valuation.
They don't. So what was the vote on this one?
I think everybody voted for it except for us, right?
Just wondering.
If you're a, if you're a farmer out in Blackhawk County, you don't think much of this one either. Cause they're paying a lot for dispatch. You know, they have, they're typical farmers running out using 911 too often.
And also.
They take care of it.
Yeah. Just like, I had a conversation with the county supervisor and this was just a brief touch on. I mean, there could be like, could it, would there be any benefit or is it possible to even think about like doing a regional, like, because every county and, I mean, we're all needing, everyone around us is needing.
Yep.
Emergency services. Like would that ever be a discussion or I mean, could it?
Actually it already has, but what's interesting is, um, Blackhawk County, Lynn County, um, Scott County, all the big metro areas. Scott County, all the big metro areas are on their own.
Okay.
But then you do have big regions that have joined together, so.
Sure.
And it probably gets more along the whole ninety-nine counties, having courthouse, I mean, all that, and there's definitely, yeah, duplication services all over. And you can find little counties in Iowa that might have three, four, or five dispatch centers, and they fight tooth and nail, they are not gonna go to the sheriff's department. And we consider Cedar Falls and say, yeah, they should have twenty, thirty years ago.
Because another thing to remember is, there's not a lot of people doing the, dispatchers are hard to come by.
Yes.
That's a stressful, ugh.
And one thing we wanna make clear is that there's not a problem with dispatch.
No.
The dispatch system is working great. I think that got drug into part of it, once they wanted to do a re-study on the whole thing, they're like, whoa, 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 this is a funding.
But for us to go find, like, we, there's not some deep pool of, yes, those are beautiful people, I'm just saying, that's an incredibly stressful job, like, we're not just gonna go find a big pool of people wanting to do dispatch.
And when this started in ninety-four, Waterloo Fire had a dispatch center, Waterloo Police had a dispatch center, Blackhawk County had a dispatch center, Cedar Falls Police had a dispatch center, and then Blackhawk County. So, the five dispatch centers went in together, and then if you back up, even in the late eighties, our fire department had their own dispatch center. But that was, that consolidated back in the eighties. And then when it started, they just used it by the number of clicks and calls for surcharge out on the radio. They did that every quarter, and that's what you paid by how much you used it. And it stayed that way all the way up until, probably, two thousand sixteen, then they started smearing population into it, and every time they did that, ours went up about forty grand.
What does you and I do?
We went on a statewide system.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Can I just do a quick time check, because it's a little after seven?
I just got, I just got a handful of things, so.
Keep going.
I'm just gonna.
Keep going?
Keep going.
I'm not, just, so, here is, this has been talked about for several years, but just two real quick graphics, what is this? This is three C, two G, but this has been in the goals for quite some time. If you look on the right, the blob there, you can kind of see the little bit of an outline that is the Cedar Falls city limits, and then in the middle there is when we had a study done back in September of twenty fifteen. What happened is, they looked at where the public safety facility is now, and if we put a public safety facility on West First Street, how would the response times look? And this is one of the, this is where it actually, we have good coverage throughout the community. So, you know, there's some areas that are outside that, I think, what was it, Craig, a three-minute response time?
I don't know, I would say that this is probably representing three or four minutes.
So, anyways, so, which is pretty standard in the industry. And anyway, we have been looking and working with the Cedar Falls School District, because once they move into the high school, my understanding is they plan on vacating the admin building, and so, working with them on potentially putting that new fire station, public safety center, because what I envision is something that would be very similar to what we have south of town, where it's got police and fire opportunities to go in there, smaller police, because the main police station's gonna be down there, but this could be an area where they bring people in. Let's say there's a crime, and you want to interview somebody, and you have two different places you can handle, so they're not facing, but the one area that I think could be a little bit bigger is our, is the training room, which we have a lot of public events in, because that is pretty popular, and it's, a lot of times, it gets maxed out pretty fast, so.
So, the, one, I had this on my list of ones, and one big thing is, is I think people just wanna know commitment. And I know it's easier said than done to get that, because the school doesn't really have for sure timeline of when they wanna be out of that building, but I think especially North Cedar residents, just wanna know either, A, when's the commitment for this, or B, also, maybe you can give us an update on where we're at. I know Jamesville, they're kind of not backed out of twenty eighty, but there was some stuff there about them being willing to do the calls, but generally, I just heard from a lot of residents that just, they've wanted some sense of security on, when are we gonna have better coverage on the north side? And we just haven't been able, we've said there's a plan, but we haven't been able to give a timeline, and I'd like to figure out, how do we get to the point of having a timeline? Get easier said than done.
So, and I don't have it in front of me right now, but what do we have in the CIP for that, Greg? Because I think it's twenty-five for maybe acquisition and.
Yeah, because of some land.
Two hundred fifty thousand, I think, is, you mean for the schools?
No, the, what's the year?
Oh, what year, sorry, I thought it was twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
I, but.
The school administ, are you talking about the school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, anyway, it's in the CIP, and there is a plan moving forward, so that's, that's the goal, is to, I think, right now, as I talk to Dr. Petit, his big concern is, hey, let me get the kids into high school first, and then we'll worry about this, so, there's.
Around the twenty.
Yeah, twenty-eight.
Twenty, okay.
So, we'll talk about it in twenty-five?
Well, probably, they'll start talking about it at the end of twenty-four.
Okay.
And have a plan to where they're going and when we can move in there, so.
And that's all their property, we don't really much to say?
That is their property, correct. Now, the other location that we've always talked about along here has been Iowa State Patrol site, and that's owned by the city, but there's, they have the lease that goes on there for on and on, and they've talked over the years about, what is, every six months, they talk about building a new facility somewhere, and then it dies down, and then they talk about.
And they continue to do parking lots and roofs, and now they re-drive all the whole thing, so I don't think they're.
So, just to kind of keep us going here, code enforcement was the next item, and talk about code enforcement, so we've got a couple of slides here, really, to talk about the efforts that we've had, so, January through October, we've had seven hundred and sixty-six some type of violations, and you can kind of see the breakdown that go out here. Now, through the years, this has always changed, the proactive part versus reactive. So, there's been councils that have talked to us and said, hey, look, we don't want you to do any proactive, but if somebody calls, go out and look at it. Well, the councils the last few years have been very much more, hey, let's go out and be proactive, walk the zones, and so, we've done that within, and I think this is one of the zones that was College Hill, and, and again, I apologize, you know, when you have these PowerPoints, sometimes the maps don't always come off the greatest, but in May of twenty-two, there was inspected eight hundred and two properties, there was fifty-six maintenance violations. I'm gonna, at the end of this, a little bit in code enforcement, I'm gonna show some of our success stories, but I'm also gonna illustrate how tough it is to get these to where they are. So, we could easily go out and walk up to a property right now and just write the citation, hey, you're out of compliance, that's not what Cedar Falls has done in the past. We've always tried to work with folks, and as they're making progress, we've done that, but, so, this year, we had eight citations issued, rental violations related to property maintenance. So, here's the problem with issuing a citation. Once we issue the citation, it's almost out of our hands. So, if we walk up to John Dos Citizen, he's got a non-conforming property, we issue the citation, now we really have to wait through, till it works through the courts. So, it's going to sit there all of that time, which is frustrating for a lot of people, especially the neighbors, a lot of times, but we've had some really good success working with, you know, trying to keep a little pressure on the neighbors. We have issued some administrative warrants, which we've been able to go out and either clean up or go in and inspect. One of the things, if you're not familiar with this, coming on as newly elected officials, the thing that is alarming is the number of properties that are hoarding properties, and working with some of those folks to get compliance on those. And sometimes, it really gets down to, if I were the fire chief, and he has to walk through there, sometimes they'll just say, look, we're gonna, we're gonna no entry order on this. If this property starts, there's no way we could service it, so. So, it gets really challenging from that, from just the health and sanitation issue of it. So, run through maybe some really quick examples here. This project, it's, because it's fuzzy here, but overgrown property maintenance problems, if you look a year later, a year and a half later, in the fall, really good. Here we go. This project was a lot of work, working with the property maintenance folks, but if you can tell, this is down at Twentieth Street, two oh seven, or twenty oh seven College Street, I think this property looks great, but again, two-year project to get this to where we need to.
Those are the same owners, same?
Yep, typically the same owners.
The top one isn't, the top one's old?
Oh, all right. Here we are, winter of twenty twenty-one, and this picture doesn't do it justice, but if you actually go out there, there's ten official, they painted it by this year, there's ten official violations, additional work still required, but there's been significant progress. Again, shoot, this one really shows up dark here on my screen here, it's not too bad, but this is a significant improvement in this particular property. So, they failed to run a lot of inspections due to building maintenance, and eight official violations, so. Yeah, so, anything code enforcement related, you know, I know we had a speaker that talked about walking around the hill and could write a thousand violations, but, you know, as we talk about, just if I backed up, and we talked about those seven hundred and sixty-six violations that are code enforcement folks, so if they, let's just say he writes ten violations this week, and then you go on to write ten next week, and write ten the following week, at some point, he's gotta go back and follow up on the first ten, and then the second ten, and that just gets to be compounding, and then all of a sudden, if one of those goes to court, now you're taking our code enforcement guy out for at least that day, and so, it really becomes a monumental task. I think he does a great job tracking those and trying to keep up on them, but sometimes they fall through the cracks, and we get back on them when we can, so.
That's probably something that's never gonna be resolved, I mean, that's probably not human nature when you're living in a community, so like, kudos to Adam and all the staff that do, and P.S., you'll get an email every once in a while saying you need to go, like, they need volunteers for a condemnation hearing, so just prepare yourself for that.
That is, so by ordinance, if we find a property that is in disrepair, and we can't get any, we call it the condemnation ordinance, but we can't get any compliance, what has to happen by ordinance is, the building official, the fire chief, the Blackhawk County Health, and then the mayor appoints three council members to go, and you walk through the building, and then you make a recommendation to the city council if it's, if you would deem it a public nuisance. And then at that council meeting, what happens is, you either deem it a public nuisance or you don't, if you do deem it a public nuisance, you come with a way to abate the nuisance, and usually, that's the property owner providing a plan. And with that type of pressure, it gives us a lot more weight for our staff than to say, hey, look, we gotta do something, or the council wants results, so.
So, maybe this is for Kevin, on our influence on the speed of these, is there something that we should address in our ordinance or bolster to say, to give our atoms more immediate results, help them get more immediate results, saying, starting today, this is what's gonna happen quicker?
What do you mean, speed? Because, I mean, depending on the issues, it could be a really large issue, and we're gonna give them six months to paint the outside of the house, and at month five, they're gonna say, I need more time, and we said to the one at State and Waterloo, no, you've already had four years, so.
Right, so how do we not?
So, we make those judgment calls about the time, depending on what the issues are, and whether they're making progress. If they haven't, if they had this whole list, and they were gonna address all of these things, and they haven't done anything, and they ask for more time, we're gonna say, ah, don't think so. So, I'm not sure what you're asking, because it, just every case.
Well, to Ron's point, that this doesn't happen overnight, that it takes time after time of trying to work, getting to the courts, well, is there another way?
Well, I'll use these here, you know, these are significant improvements, and two years, you know, sometimes it's a budgeting issue for these folks, and they say, hey, here's my, here's my schedule, I'm giving you this in the, in the spring of twenty-three, or twenty-one, and by the time everything happens, so it's, like Stephanie said, it's kind of a balancing act, when you walk through here, you wanna see them making progress, and you wanna make sure that they're getting, we're getting compliance in the end, but at the end of the day, you know, they've gotta do that. I know some of the problems that we've had have been driveway and hard surfacing of their driveways. Well, moving forward on that is, sometimes it's contractor-related, or if we, now all of a sudden, hey, what's your plan, because it's November, and they're saying, oh, we can't get a driveway permit, well, so, okay, so you're gonna have it done by July one, then, we're giving you a couple of months in the summer months, so.
I would add, at the end of the day, if we go the court route, and the citation, that they'll find a violation, and we can also ask for an abatement order, and so, the judge could order abatement, which is what we're looking for, right? That's the point, we don't want to fine, we want the abatement. So, if, if, let's say, you're ordered to abate in sixty days, and they don't do it, well, nothing happens till we go back to court again and say, hey, these people didn't abate, we wanna, you know what our next step? Hold them to contempt. Okay, so that's serious business. So, we go back in, we want a contempt order, judge, these owners say, I got a contract, I couldn't get anybody to do it, or, I don't have the money, I need more time, judge. So, the judge is gonna say, am I gonna fine you extra over above this, or am I gonna give you a little more time? We know what the judge is gonna do. So, that informs us to try to work with these people, because at the end of the day, the process is gonna be about the same.
And we're looking for compliance, the citation doesn't mean anything, it's more the compliance, and a lot of these folks are now getting, you know, when it first started, accountability points, and so, those points go towards if they can have a licensed rental. And so, I think they had a meeting with folks that manage over five hundred units just this week, and, you know, hey, how can we be better?
So. Tyler, you're getting at all, just trying to get more projects in the hopper, of ones we're enforcing, so we're just addressing them?
It's the same calls, hey, you know, this house is, there's a fence up here, and there's a dog on the trampoline, and it's biting at the kids as they go by, and it's, they've had four different renters in there, and, you know, okay, well, then I talk to Stephanie, and then, and then, you know, it just, it takes, you know, I, to, Anna's talk about, here's what we hear from the neighbors, this is part of what I hear from the neighbors.
You know, just 'cause I had Dustin sent me some stuff, because I asked him if there's anything to cover before I left, and it was similar, he just wanted to look at the organizational structure of code enforcement and rental inspections, but he said that's probably something that could be covered under the staff assessment, and just, and I think, again, I don't know exactly what he's thinking, but just looking at, are we putting as many resources toward it as?
He and I briefly talked about it once, and he talked about, you know, should it be, should it be under police? And so, we've had it under police in years past, and so, police officers are in policing because they like to be police officers, and they think, hey, you know, I'll go in code enforcement to take a little break, and then they go, you know, this, this isn't all that much fun, so I'd like to rotate back out of code enforcement and go to policing. And so, so that, it seems like there's a lot of times where it's a constant training, when you're in there, you usually get a guy for six months to a year, and then you're retraining, and the code enforcement's a lot of, just that code reading and learning the code, and so, I think, I think it's in the right spot. The question is, you know, how much of an emphasis does the council wanna put on it, and do you think we have the right staff? We've got a person, a full-time person and a permanent part-time person right now.
I think we have great staff doing it, and I feel like we've come, I feel like I've seen improvement in that aspect, just in the time that I've been on council, so.
Yeah, and I think hearing from a lot of the people who live in this neighborhood that's been so heavily enforced, I mean, there's definitely been a few neighbors who, you know, own their property, and they'll get a letter that says, hello, you have to, you know, mow your lawn, or whatever, and, you know, I think generally speaking, people are happy with the. are happy with the way that it's working now, because they know that that progress is happening around them, and, you know, we've had a lot of luck with just reaching out to Adam and saying, hey, like, this place has trash every single week, all over, everywhere, and then two weeks later, it's gone and it's not a problem again. So, you know, I feel like the process is working pretty well right now, relatively. I mean, I obviously don't have the same experience with, like, the hoarding houses or anything like that, this is more just sort of nuisance, yeah.
So I'm gonna.
Oh, Stephanie. One more thing to add to the proactive part of it is, not just the walking, but let's say we get a complaint to a particular property, our code enforcement officer is looking at the area around it as well, so we're not doing just a one-off then, we're doing several properties, because the first thing they'll hear from the one person that got the letter was, how, what about the person across the street that has this and this?
That is something I've heard from people.
And it's very nice to say, yep, we, we're taking care of that one too. Oh, okay.
I think part of it as well is, is how heavy-handed does council want to get on this? What, what, do you interface with the public on a really unpleasant situation? How hard do you want to come down initially? Do you wanna try to work it out first, and then sort of the citation last resort idea? A lot of times, it's these people's only contact, it's sitting in, so it's not great for them.
And they are humans. I mean, once you're sitting up, I think any of us that have sat up there, I mean, you're dealing with human beings that maybe have different things going on, so like, I think, I think, again, that, I echo him, I think the process is working, I think in my mind, obviously, we take complaints, I think when I've passed complaints on, I don't think, I know when I've passed complaints on to staff, they've been there to, you know, address that, and then also just remembering in my own mind that this is something that's never going, I'm not talking about the individual property, I'm talking about problems, overall, this is going to be something that's a part of this, living in a community together.
Yeah. So is there any consensus to wanna review anything, or is consensus to keep what it is now?
Yep.
Okay, I think I only have like three more things, so hopefully you can go. So refuse route collection transaction fees, this is something that was brought up by Public Works, it really, it's, it's, it's an interesting, we now have a new route ware system, and Chase, you're gonna have to correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a route ware system that we go in and we take pictures, this is actually kind of a code enforcement issue too, because as soon as you get one of these, these things is blowing all over the neighborhood, but one of the problems that they've had is the ordinance requires that you bring your garbage out by 7:00 AM, and so if you're not there by 7:00 AM, what happens is, is sometimes the garbage truck goes right by, well, they'll call and say, hey, they didn't, they didn't go by yet, or they missed my house. Well, we actually have the capability now that, first of all, you can track our trucks and say, oh, nope, they didn't go by yet, they're two blocks away, or, yep, they went by a half an hour ago, and, and you didn't have anything. Well, so, one of the things that they're proposing is there, if we have to go back out and into the thing, when they call at 4 o'clock and say, hey, come on, back out, is there something that they wish to create an ordinance to have an additional fee for that? Right now, they're proposing $15. Waterloo actually has this, and it's a $20 fee that they have, so.
So, I'm not to fudge, but like, I got to do, before I went on my little tour of the wastewater treatment plant, I did a garbage truck ride along, and like, that was a great, it was a great day. I 100% support that, because I feel like, if that person has to, or a whole, sometimes does a whole new truck go out, I mean, either way, you're taking a lot of staff time, and I feel like, I feel like the refuse staff goes above and beyond for a lot of folks, I mean, right, Chase? There's times where they're like going, there are folks that we know need some additional help, and we are.
For many years, we just obviously just go back and work with the property owners, make it up at no charge, but it's become more problematic.
Time, gas.
And these scenarios are, you know, maybe the individual doesn't wanna pay for the large 90-gallon cart, they'll buy the medium cart, and then stack five bags out and leave the door open, because they don't wanna pay the extra fee for the larger cart. Really, they should have the larger cart.
Couple of comments on that, though. With college students and tenant move outs, it's very common to have a cart stacked full. If they don't put it there, it's gonna be laying on the grass and ground anyway. I don't like that top one, the $15 per occurrence, you gotta put a broom handle, excuse me, a broom handle or something in there, and the lid won't close anyway, or the wind blows, if it's open a little bit, the wind blows the lid open anyway, and it's, I don't like that first one at all. If, I don't, it's not a good thing.
Honestly, those are the individuals that are doing it, the renters and.
Well, it's still, it's heavy-handed in my mind, I'd rather have the garbage just picked up and taken away, and if it litters in the yard, then you give them a litter citation, but to penalize this, the second one, to your point, if they have too small of a cart, I agree with that, okay? But if it's the large one, and it's a move out of a renter, or anybody moving anywhere, filling these up, if it's habitual every weekend, every week, yeah, but not a one-off event that they should be stocked $15, I don't agree with that at all.
Is there a twice-a-year large pickup allowance?
Bulk collection.
Bulk collection twice a year?
No, it's 10 bucks for 10 items, right?
Every, for, anytime.
Anytime.
There's a charge, there isn't a.
There's no freebie.
Well, I think.
And then there's also a bag tag.
But that's still cheaper.
If your cart's full and you wanna purchase a bag tag, which is $1.25, you can pick up a bag tag, and that's the appropriate way to do it, if my cart's full, I get an extra bag tag for $1.25, shove my cart lid, so my extra bag, top of the cart with the bag tag.
So how do we handle the, again, not so much next week, but when semester's end and we just have, the bulk carts full, are we just graciously bulk picking that stuff up, or is someone?
It's a lot of bulk collection.
Well, and that's a huge issue in the cultural neighborhood, because I think that there are, you know, it's your first time, living in a house without mom and dad, and I don't think that very many college students know how to properly dispose of their garbage. We get a lot of trash coming from the garbage cart, because it's not in a bag, it's just put into the bin, and then the lid is always open, and, you know, I think there is, again, kind of going back to collaborating with, you know, our different groups, we've talked at the cultural partnership a lot about education, how can we, you know, get information out to new renters and help them to understand how this process works, but it is, trash in that neighborhood is a huge issue, and so, you know, I think if there are things that we can do to start to mediate those things, you know.
Do we consult with, if there's a forklift, and they have four of the large carts or four of the medium carts? Do you talk to them, or does someone talk to them and say, you'd better serve with a this-sized dumpster?
We've had conversations, you know, those type of situations, they'll leave them at the curb too, which you're required to bring back, they'll leave them out at the curb all week.
And would this be built then automatically based on the code, on the game?
Yeah, the, the software we have actually has an identification tag on the cart.
And the, and the ability to actually take the picture of the.
For a rental, then, would that could build the landlord?
What's gonna happen there, what, the tenant moves out, they turn off the utility bill, then the garbage comes the following Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever day, and then it's gonna be on the landlord, and he has no knowledge of that happening.
It sounds like the landlord would take it as a legal problem, like, for the tenants.
If they even have any damage about left.
So this may be one that, that there's a lot more to talk about, and so, would everybody be agreeable to go into a work session? That way, we'd have Brian there, who's.
Yes. Work session?
Hey, Chase, how many calls on average do you get for the bottom part of that there, comeback?
A large one would be about five, or, sorry, five to 10 is normally.
In a week or in a day, I'm sorry?
A week.
Five.
Five to 10.
No, five to 10 per week.
Sorry.
Five to 10 per week.
Five to 10 per week.
Every week.
Chase, are some of those folks repeat offenders? Like, are there some folks, there are some folks that maybe truly forget, but are there some folks that just like, just, they don't really care? So they, I don't mind having a, this is my concern, is that person doesn't get a lunch break, because they're having to run back out to somebody who just doesn't care, that's wrong.
Now, how often do you change the timing of the route? Because occasionally, the route truck shows up much earlier than normal.
Generally, it's, it's pretty, other than all in a.
Yeah, double, double pickup days.
So can I go and check with the group, then? It sounds like a work session on this.
Yeah, work session.
Two more items, and this one, I'll just run through some quick slides, but last year, we broached this with you, the solid waste transfer station, so built in 1992, it's served the community for about 40 years, and, and if you look at that, we do about 12,500 tons annually as we move forward in this location. So one of the things that we know that started to happen is, in a couple slides, I'll be able to show you, but this is in a floodplain, and so the DNR has now started permitting a number of things, what, and what typically happens with the DNR is they never tell you you can't, you can't do that, what they tell you is, okay, now you're gonna have to do these requirements. And so if you look at the area that was right there, a couple years ago, we had that, it used to be a mountain of recycled shingles, and that was actually a really great program for us, well, the DNR came in and said, hey, you can't have just loose stuff now, within your permit, you have to have those in bins, and there's no way we could accommodate that many bins for the recycled asphalt shingles. So we had to kind of discontinue that, which I think was, was kind of bad news, it was a good program. What's that?
Did we make any money on the asphalt shingles?
Or is it just cheaper?
Well, kept it out of the landfill was the big thing. They kept it out of the landfill.
But the. The money was very low.
I mean, any of our recycling is not, it's, no, it's, but it keeps it out of the landfill. And so one of the things that we started doing is, we know these, the DNR regulations are gonna continue to get a little more and more restrictive, and you can kind of see right here where we're at in the floodplain, so it's not real good, but the lighter here is a 100-year floodplain, the darker blue is a 500-year floodplain, this, the picture on the right is really what the DNR sees when, when they visit a site like that, they're saying, hey, look at all those contaminants that are actually going through the floodwater. So the other thing we're starting to see is kind of a 40-year old facility, starting to see some wear and tear and what's gonna happen in that. So we've put it in the CIP to actually start looking at a new land acquisition to put up a new transfer station. The difficult thing is, you know, the transfer station is right in the center part of town, it's a great location, and maybe they'll have something there, but it's just a limited area. Unfortunately, you're not gonna find, be able to put another one in the center of town. You try to go into a neighborhood and try to put one there, oh, no, we don't want a transfer station.
That's not it.
So, so actually, we're gonna continue to look, but we're looking in, and this may get, one of those plans that if we find a good site and it comes available, we may be coming to you quicker just to acquire that site, so.
And is in that consideration, some public safety training facilities?
Absolutely, so, once, once upon a time, we talked about, let's say we ended up buying 40 acres and we needed 20, 20 acres for this, there could be 20 acres for some type of a public safety facility, whether it's something with, on the police side with a building that they can do some training in, or on the fireside, or potentially both, but those would be a little bit more longer-range plans on that location, so. Last, last topic I believe that I have for you today is just general legislative, we had a handout there that came from our folks, and talk about the, what some of those priorities will be moving forward, and what they're anticipating, talking about, but as we talked about earlier, we don't have a time set for the 26th, so if anybody has preference on times, maybe get it to us, but our lobbyists are right now working with our local legislators to see if their availability, availability on the 26th, so we can.
Is that a Friday?
Yes, and that's because they're in session Fridays the day, yeah.
I feel like, just later in, I mean, not way late, but like, last time, whatever we did last time was good, 'cause I don't wanna go back to where.
Before the first funnel, or maybe half of the first funnel have any effect?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your influence, once the funnel.
I just don't have to go, once I'm gone, I wanna just be like.
So, Amy, that's what I have, so.
No, it's a quick, I've talked to Ron on the legislative piece, and do wanna get more involved locally, just making sure we're more present in the conversations, building, and building the relationships, so that when things come up, there's a closer relationship, so that we can get it sooner than just hearing about it once the house file's already passed or before.
Your lobbyist's job is to get whatever's inkling out there to you now.
This one was a surprise, though, right? The house file, whatever, is like a, in the dark at night deal.
That, that one came up pretty suddenly last year.
So what was the justification for eliminating the hotel levy, library levy?
Just to drive down the, everything under.
Yeah, he's library.
But it's our own choice to do it for our own city, not state law, right?
They don't like home rule.
Is there any way, like, is there, would it be beneficial to have a work session? I get to go to a, you know, the route had a thing about house file and what that's doing to our local area, 'cause I think, last time I mentioned cutting away the museum stuff, and I was like, oh, that's Waterloo, not that that matters, 'cause we're a region, but that doesn't get, if you're familiar with, what do the little kids do? And what are you doing in 4th grade? Museum school. Museum school is probably gonna get cut if we don't, you know, I don't know that for sure, but if we don't, that's a big funding for the museum school, I think we all, if you have a child that's gone through Cedar Falls Community Schools, then that's a pretty big, anyway, I'm wondering if we can have a work session with maybe our library director and maybe the grout museum person to kind of give us a little blurb about the reality of this. I know it's probably in here too, but sometimes it's nice to be able to hear it and like, ask a question.
Jen covered a little bit of it last time, but I think, yes, we can, if you guys are interested.
What would we decide at the work session?
It's not a decision.
More of an.
More just information.
Oh, okay.
So maybe just presentation from Kelly.
On house file, how.
7:18.
House file.
You hear, you hear.
Yes.
Really quick, before you do that, just was there anything that you guys felt we didn't get a chance to cover tonight of goal three? Anything else you'd like to make sure, just before we call it, that we add to the next sessions?
Having none? You're heat.